To order on April 19 at the John Sun Community Center and via Zoom at 6:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the City Council and GCTV-17. If any other persons present are doing the same, if you could notify me at this time, is there anyone else recording? In accordance with MGL 30A, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the Chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the Chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the Chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Clerk Scott, roll call of members.
Councillor Golub.
Here.
President Gwynn.
Here.
Councillor Disorder.
Here.
Councillor Bottomley.
Here.
Councillor Bullock.
Councillor Gilmore.
Here.
Councillor Lapinski.
Present.
Councillor Mayo.
Here.
Councillor Healy.
Councillor Elmer.
Here.
Vice President Forgy.
Here.
Councillor Ricketts. Councillor Toronzo.
Here.
President Alvin.
Thank you. I would need a motion to accept the minutes from February 15 and March 15, and I would like to do that with a friendly amendment to, was it February 15? February 15? And these were just a correction that was brought to us by a constituent, and that is, in the mayor's comments, she referred to a couple of numbers that were coming out of the legislature, and one of the clarifications, we checked all three numbers, and one was spoken as H88, or recorded that, and it was H81. But we didn't vote on anything, it was just clarification. This came from a constituent, so I want to make sure we checked it, and we did. So if no one objects, it will be recorded as H81, we showed H88. With that being said, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. Any abstentions? Seeing none.
I'll just point of order, did we skip out of order?
Yeah, I did because at the time, it was a little, not everyone was here, so we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I just knew I had to read about the changes, so when allowed to do the Pledge of Allegiance, it is voluntary.
[inaudible]
And thank you for getting me back on track, Councillor Toronzo. We are now going to have communications from the superintendent, and then we'll do the mayor's office and the city employees. I do ask, for the next couple of meetings, we are going to be dealing a lot with budgets. You know, tonight is capital, and then next meetings are going to be operating budget. So I do recommend to everybody, if you have questions that don't pertain to tonight's meeting, or anything you need immediate, that you could, that you need to send to any of the officials, so we can get those answered. I'm not suggesting for a moment that you don't have a chance to ask questions, I'm just making sure that we think about the time it takes us to get through these meetings and not be here well into the middle of the night. So if anybody has any questions for the superintendent's office, obviously ask, and especially if they pertain to something they spoke on this evening, or something that you're worried about. So, that being said, Chair Peretti.
Thank you, President Gwynn. Good evening. I have a few informational items, as well as a statement on the budget process, and then, of course, I'd be happy to take any of your questions. You are obviously stuck with just me tonight, we are on April break week in the schools. Superintendent DeBarge and Assistant Superintendent Patenode are both on vacation this week. As I mentioned in my report to the council in March, the last day of school for 2223 academic year will be June 22, barring any unexpected circumstances, of course. At our last meeting, the school committee approved the 2324 academic calendar, and is now available on the district website. Also, at our meeting last week, we approved settlement agreements for four unions with a unanimous vote of the members that were present. Staff in Unit A of the Greenfield Education Association now have a contract in place through June 30, 2025. Staff in Unit C of the GEA also have a contract through June 30, 2025. And our cafeteria and custodial and maintenance workers have three-year contracts that run through June 30, 2026. School committee members voted unanimously at last week's meeting to share with the council written statements on the FY24 mayor's budget. I believe those statements from Vice Chair Martini, Secretary Ekstrom, and Members Wall and Denis have been distributed to the council. And I'd like to take a few minutes just to share my own thoughts at this point. Curriculum supplies, textbooks, special education expenses, computer hardware and computer software, these are basic needs for any district. They aren't extravagant, they aren't sexy. Superintendent DeBarge and her administrative team put together a plan over multiple fiscal years to pay for these through the pandemic grant funds called ESER. These planned expenditures have been shared with the school committee and the public multiple times since the plan was put in place in fall of 2021. The district's business manager, Andy Paquette, as well as any municipal finance manager with a basic understanding of municipal budgeting, will tell you, it is irresponsible to use grant or one-time funds to pay wages, it's simply not sustainable. However, in the mayor's FY24 budget, this becomes the forced reality of the Greenfield Public Schools. Instead of curriculum supplies, textbooks, computers, and expenses for our most vulnerable students, our grant funds will be used to pay our staff. Please do not misrepresent what I am saying. We must fund the contracts that are well-deserved and were negotiated in good faith with the mayor at the table as a voting member of the school committee. Our staff deserves no less, and in fact, they arguably deserve much more. I urge you, the council, as stewards of the priorities and funds of the city of Greenfield, to review what is and what isn't in the mayor's budget, and compare that with her public statements about why this is. Initially, the mayor said previously negotiated contracts needed to be funded. She wasn't referring to the school department, and this obviously created a space for hard questions, and exposed the discrimination in this reasoning. The latest reasons from the mayor don't mention funding contracts at all, instead, the schools have declining enrollment. She quotes an exorbitant number of 158 students lost. This is either a fabrication or a stretch of epic proportions. The numbers used by the state show our district losing only 11 students from FY22 to FY23, and 57 students from FY23 to FY24. I am at a loss to identify where the mayor's figures originate. Additionally, the mayor blames the state for reducing their funding, and says, we should be looking to them, not to the local, for more funding. I can assure you, I advocate regularly with Senator Commerford and Representative Blay. I can also assure you that funding from the city has declined much more rapidly over the years than funding from the Commonwealth. As a school committee, we're hopeful the Healy Driscoll administration will increase education spending. I'm less optimistic about our prospects locally, as Mayor Regardner seems reluctant to even agree the school department employees are city employees. In closing, I point you to the details in the written statements you received from Secretary Susan Ekstrom, Member Jean Wall. Secretary Ekstrom outlines an area of concern we should all pay attention to, Medicaid reimbursements. And I will quote her, "Between 2017 and 2022, the city has been reimbursed by Medicaid," meaning federal funding, "for expenses that the school department pays for, things like mental behavioral health services, skilled nursing care, occupational therapy, physical therapy, physical and behavioral health screenings, and speech therapy within the schools. The total of this is $1,861,995." According to the FY2024 budget book on page 56, "Insurance reimbursements are to offset the cost for repairing or replacing buildings, vehicles, or equipment." End quote. These services are being provided in the schools for our most vulnerable students by our staff, but when the reimbursements return to the city, they are used elsewhere. For the sake of brevity, I won't discuss the details here, but I would also urge you to read Secretary Ekstrom's calculations on the budget to actual for employee benefits, which due to a lack of regular reconciliation on the city side, short-changes the schools significantly each fiscal year. Member Wall negotiated our union settlement agreements, and in her statement, she highlights the problem we now face better than I ever could. Quote, "No monetary decisions were ever made without bringing the school committee up to date in executive session. This is standard operating procedure, and it's guided by committee policy. This is responsible planning and a requirement of good-faith bargaining. What the mayor's budget did instead circumvents school committee priorities and planning that her past public vote suggests that she supports. The school committee reluctantly agreed to fund a half a million dollars of the negotiated settlement with the GEA. No other city department is being asked to do this. That was injury enough. The added insult is then leaving the district on the hook for triple that amount in wages and crippling investment in our students as a result." And with that, I'll take your questions.
Amy, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for your statement, for advocating for the schools, for pointing out the years of Medicaid reimbursement that haven't been happening, and for also pointing out the erroneous numbers. It's something that we've been seeing a bit too in our budget preparation, and personally, I'll do all I can to be advocating for the schools. Thank you, and all the other fellow school committee members who are sitting here tonight, and all of you who, all of you who've spoken on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor, yeah, Councillor, I'll start with Councillor Elmer, and then Councillor Lapinski.
What can the City Council do about this?
It's, it is, it's an excellent question. I think under normal circumstances, you would have some funds available that you could transfer from place to place. I want to be very, very clear that I am not expecting that you take from any other department to give to the schools, nor would I expect that of any other department. Pitting us against each other does not help the situation. I, I hope you would question the lack of funds that are available based on the levy limit, and I hope that you would question the, some of the reasoning behind the decisions that were made. I, I don't honestly, I'm doing my job, I need you to advocate and do the best you can to do your job, and figure out what to do. It is, I believe, a difficult situation for all of us, and I, I don't know that there are huge things that you can do, but certainly there are questions that can be asked, research that can be done, and I would hope that you would start there. And thank you for the question.
Councillor Lapinski.
So, for the benefit of the public, you used an acronym that I'm, I think, also not familiar with. What is GEA in that context?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Teachers Union, it's the, or the, many of the staff are covered under the Greenfield Education Association, the GEA.
Greenfield Education Association, okay. And I, I think I want to just disagree with what you said, where there's not, I think there is something we can do, we're going to have to work on what that is, and I somewhat disagree with you also on the, on the issue of pitting departments against each other. I think the mayor's made it very clear that that's what's being done, and so if we were to take up the issue, it wouldn't be us doing it.
Better you saying it than me, councillor.
Councillor Bullock.
Yeah, I'm wondering, this is a numbers-specific question, so if you don't have the answer, I meant to email you today.
You got, you got, you got the rumor already that I'm not a numbers person.
Yeah, well, my, I meant to email you, and my day got away from me, so my apologies, but I understand that there's a per-student minimum that is, like, it's like around $12,000 per student, but I'm wondering what the, if we know for Greenfield, or if you know for Greenfield, what the maximum per student is, so those, like, high, high-user students, what the maximum number is or around?
I, I'm not going to answer specifically, I am going to say the minimum is around 14,000.
Okay.
I can get you the exact minimum number, and I'm going to write down, you're asking about the maximum, you think there is a maximum?
Well, I know that, like, we're only reimbursed for the minimum, for a minimum amount per student, but I know that we must have students in our district that use over that minimum amount, right? And many other, many other cities or municipalities, they fund over the minimum per student, and so I'm, what I'm asking is, like, what is the maximum per student we're, we're spending on those, the high, high-using students?
I'm going to have to get back to you once the superintendent and the business manager are available to answer that. I think it's a really good question, and certainly, one of the challenges for school districts, if I can speak generally to your question, is that when you have students who have unique and special needs, it's going to really vary from individual to individual. You might have a student who has challenges that bring the expenses for the district up into, you know, the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year, and that obviously is just a case-by-case thing, and I can get you some information about how that impacts the budget as well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm asking not because I think it's bad that we have high, like, high-cost students.
Understood.
I'm asking because I'm, was comparing today how much our minimum per student is to other districts, and was trying to get a sense of, like, how much other districts put into their city municipal funding, so.
The city does spend above the required minimum.
Yep.
And I, I believe it is in Greenfield, the, I wouldn't even speak to that, I know that the, the state minimum requirement is around 14,000.
Okay.
And we can get you some more information, I appreciate the questions, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councillor Golub.
Hi, first of all, I just want to thank you, I've really, I appreciate it getting the email and the other school committee members who are here. The unified stance has been something I've been really grateful for. And my question is that you mentioned the danger of funding our schools through grant funding, and if we do not fund the upcoming fiscal year's budget with the general fund, and we depend on grants, it seems to me as if we are exasperating a looming crisis, that we're making it much worse, and I'm wondering if you could speak to the impact, and the longer-term impact perhaps, of funding the schools with a grant?
I guess I would, I would speak in a couple of different ways, that you probably have heard the term fiscal cliff, that's what we'll have in FY25. Most of the money that we are prepared to shift, if necessary, to FY24 is, like I mentioned, for curriculum supplies, for textbooks, for Chromebooks that will end of life next summer and won't be usable. Those funds, we had planned out over multiple years of ESER funding to use them for those things. Instead, we're going to use all of those funds for wages in FY24, and that leaves us in a very precarious position for FY25. The ESER funds will be gone. I, I hope we don't have something that brings us more pandemic funds, but that is where we're at, unless there is a step up from the local, or, and, you know, the Commonwealth has indicated that there will be some changes, but we are talking about a city budget that has consistently underfunded the schools, and significantly this year, almost dollar for dollar, what was agreed upon to cover the first year of the contract for our students, for our staff. And so here we sit with a very, very challenging FY25 ahead of us.
Has anyone want to ask a question that hasn't asked anything thus far? Doug, you're not on.
Thank you.
You're back on mute again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. This is for Chairman Peretti. I noticed, I was flipping through the, the budget book I just got today, because it was, let's just say that March and April have been hell on wheels for me, and I've been doing a lot of ketchup. So, I did flip through the budget book today and was disturbed, I cannot find the page, but I was flipping through it, and I saw a dollar amount for special interest students, and it was zero. And I wanted to bring that up, if you knew anything about that, was that a mistake? Is that, is that a true number? Is, that seems horrible to see that number if it isn't be true. Can you shed some light on that?
Well, I appreciate the question, I can tell you, I don't have the budget book in front of me, I don't know specifically which line item you're referencing. I would also say that we are not putting $0 towards our special needs students, that absolutely would not be the case. But I can certainly, you know, take a look and see if we can figure out what you're referencing, and get you some more background on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair Peretti will also be going into our regular Ways and Means meetings and stuff, we can also question that if, if that's the case.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments based on a few things that I wrote down while others were talking, and one was building off of what Councillor Elmer asked you, and he said, "What can we do?", you know, and you suggested that, obviously, you know, our, our ability is limited in some ways, but the one thing that I wanted to let you know is, we have, we're doing our homework right now as we speak, that's what, that's what stage we're at. We do not have a single piece of operating budget on today's agenda. Today is capital, and my Ways and Means Committee has been doing their due diligence on all of that, and, and began the operating budget, but we haven't even started in Ways and Means with the school budget at all yet. So, that's going to be taken up by Councillor Disorder and Ways and Means, and I have full faith that she'll find the numbers that, that are being asked about, and we'll get into it. I just don't want anyone to think we're that far along, you know? The schedule says that our budget has to be done by May, but that's, that's the city schedule, the state of Massachusetts doesn't have us need the budget till June, so we'll do what we have to do to get the budget where we need it, from this group and, and all. So, schools are, and I don't want to say they've just begun, because a lot of these people have been doing a lot of work getting ready for it, but we have not had a meeting yet, or even, so there's nothing we'll vote on tonight that's in that realm, and we've only just begun to take a look at it and see where we can assist in this budget process and, and give that. And second of all, I was wondering, when you were putting together the budget, local transportation, there seem to have been some changes in recent years, and it seems to be a little out of, I don't know, there was, there's some increase, and there's some costs that seem a little bit elevated, is, was that looked at by the school committee in this process at this far, and that's my only question? Did, did someone look at transportation that came out from the past superintendent? Would that be an avenue where there might be some money available?
That's a really, that's a really good question. We have looked at, in terms of the school committee, we've addressed, only looking at what we could do with local transportation in terms of reductions for FY24, and if anyone did watch our meeting from last week, I actually did make a comment that I was surprised about the amount that we were able to reduce potentially in certain lines to help cover that 1.5 million gap that exists potentially currently. There have been a couple of shifts, and from the way that the question was answered, it sounds like there can be other shifts in terms of local versus vendor expenses for transportation, but I would want the superintendent to address that further. The only other piece that I could add is that we have, within the past three fiscal years, purchased some new vans, but that is a normal course of business, doesn't necessarily mean we have more local transportation power, so where those reductions and flexibility is coming from, I would want the superintendent to address that more specifically.
Thank you. If we could just check, and I know we, we had made some changes in recent years to transportation, and just, just curiosity more than anything, and I can talk about that.
And to address your other comment, we meet with, the school department meets with Ways and Means on Monday, the 24th, so you are, it's important to note that, let's not get ahead of ourselves, we still have that.
Yeah, I just didn't want people to think we're in any way that we're wrapping this up, we, we're just unwrapping it at the moment, and, and we're going to take a look at all this, and, and this group's going to do what it takes to get this, you know, in our abilities. Councillor Bullock.
Yeah, sorry, I should have asked this one before, but I've watched over the last few years since COVID hit, the school committee talk about declining enrollment at many meetings, and I'm wondering if you think that defunding the school at this level is going to help with boosting our enrollment?
The simple answer to that is no, and we, if you pay attention at all to the examples that are given to explain this, if you lose two students in grade two, you can't shut down a grade classroom, you cannot control where the loss of students comes from, and, you know, the budgeting pieces become... And, you know, the budgeting pieces become challenging. It should come as no surprise to any Western Massachusetts district that we have declining enrollment. That is not new. I've, I, I've talked about it extensively. I, I've talked about the impact of school choice on, on our numbers. And my, you know, layman's, before I became chair of the school committee, my layman's observations is that it's very often cyclical. You know, Mohawk will benefit from school choice for a handful of years and then they'll fall out of favor and Greenfield will benefit. And then Gil Montague will benefit. And those pieces are directly related to two things that I see. One is the school choice and why that is allowed. And then the, the second piece is around the encroachment of technical schools on the mission of the public schools. The technical schools have expanded their reach quite a bit. And I would love to see some more work around why we have so many students that I think would never have looked at a technical school 10, 15, 20 years ago, feeling like Franklin Tech or Smith-Vogue or another option are the right option for them. And, and what we can do in the other districts to, to change that or what we can do as municipalities to, to impact that. That's, that's where I think, I think we need, we need to look at those things. And they are, they're really long-term and they require definitely working with the districts around us and working with the Commonwealth to, to address what's happening and how, and how we can resolve it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Hold on, could I, Mr. Chair, this is Doug Mayo.
Sure.
I found the page, Chairman Peretti, I found the page that I was looking for. And you may not have the budget book with you.
We'll take notes on this.
It's, it's on page 16, three quarters of the way down. It says special education. And the last, for FY 24, it has zero.
I appreciate the reference. And again, we'll have to get back to you with more information.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to give you as much information as I could.
You're not getting away yet. Counselor Toronto.
Sorry, I, I just, I agree with a lot of what you were just saying, Chair Peretti. There, I, I've been having a lot of discussions, not just recently, but throughout the last few years especially, with kind of the outlook of where it seems like school systems in general are going. And I, I think it's important, what you just pointed out is kind of the way that the butter gets spread real thin across a lot of different avenues. And I agree with you wholly on the school choice problem, I call it. And I, I just, not, not as an answer to what you're saying, but maybe just as an addition, when you're, when you're speaking of vocational schools, tech schools, why, why the shift has been there, I think I would posture that part of it could be from society and that we focus way too much on the almighty dollar, on what our, what our children would be perceived to be getting out of education and the shift in the way our society is moving, rather than, rather than, I don't want to use the word breeding, but breeding well-rounded students. And a reason why the cyclical-ness can go on is tied heavily to the funding in, in places where you see when arts get cut, when music gets cut, when sports get cut, when things that make a well-rounded student, not just your math, science, English requirements, but actually give people something else of a, give the students something more of a worth to why they're going there instead of just being essentially drones spitting out regurgitating information. And I would, to not go too far into this, would bring this to what our state requirements have become in the last 20, 25 years. And I was just having a conversation last night that I liken this, where, where it seems like it's going, if anyone remembers a wrinkle in time, I liken it to the children mindlessly bouncing a ball until one steps out of order and then has to go get reprogrammed. And I think that's actually the biggest sadness that I see with the change in the, the way that the schools are. And it starts with what we want to put the money towards and what we, if we're not going to fund the future in education, in children, then what is the rest of this worth? Like, why are we, why are we building buildings if no one's going to be there to occupy them or do the jobs that they're intended for in the first place? So I just wanted to get that out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Peretti. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mayor's office.
I have Chief of Staff Danny Letourneau here because she has some remarks, but I will start. This feels very strange. Here we go. So I'd like to remind, I'd like to talk about a few things on this and then I may, with the President's indulgence, make a couple of comments off of the agenda based on the previous words from the school committee.
Anything that you want to discuss with, it pertains to the schools, I will more than allow that this evening.
So.
Or so.
In the, in the area of news, we've received two Massachusetts Compact Connector grants, best practices grants geared to enhancing our human resources work in the city. And we'll be working with the Collins Center of UMass who will be doing the work on the grants. We have a $50,000 grant to develop a formal wage and classification plan that will detail our job descriptions, employee grades, and salary ranges. This will allow us to make better pay decisions that are reasonable in comparison to similar work being carried out in all areas of our city government. We're looking for a way to achieve some parity and equity, understanding that many of the jobs that we do in the city don't align task for task. They require different, different education, different types of licenses, and different things like that. In this case, we'll be looking at our department heads primarily, those positions, and some of the supervisory positions that are within our workforce. So I'm looking forward to getting the results of that study because I think it will help us align with either other communities or within our, within our city. And that's a $50,000 grant. Additionally, we received a $35,000 grant to develop a data-driven and informed plan that will guide our human resources department to recruit, in their recruitment and retention of a more diverse workforce. It will include recommendations for policies and procedures to be adopted in our efforts to help increase diversity among our city employees. And again, I think that's a worthwhile thing that we have been thinking about since, since I became mayor. And we now have an opportunity to actually get down into the data about how we can go about doing better recruitment and better retention of, of our diverse, of a diverse workforce. And you are looking at your capital budget tonight, or our capital budget tonight. I do just want to focus a, a couple of things on the capital budget. It does what it's been doing for the last three years. It stresses a continued commitment to upgrading our aging equipment and vehicles, upgrading our aging infrastructure, and maintaining buildings to meet code and mandatory professional standards. The choices in the capital budget that were made in the mayor's version of the capital budget were focused on three principles. The safety of our municipal buildings and the staff working within them. The ongoing and necessary maintenance of our bill, city's buildings to counteract years of deferred maintenance. There has been so much deferred maintenance throughout the city in many of the buildings that we own and that we all occupy and that we work in. And the need to upgrade our vehicles that have outlived their accepted useful life. With the increase in capital stabilization money, we're going to be able to ensure that the most necessary capital requests can be funded without adding to the borrowing side. And I think that's a really important thing to think about at this time. So I did also want to make a statement regarding, at the chief of police request, regarding the chief's status. I think I would like to take this out of the realm of rumor and into the realm of fact. And that is that Chief Hague has returned from an FMLA leave as of 4/13, and he is returned to full duty without restrictions. So if there was some other idea in mind, that is what the reality is. Now, with regard to some of the statements that were made prior to my sitting up here, just let me explain to you that it was very difficult to put together the FY 24 operating budget because we are in a difficult situation. Our state aid is down. If you looked at the most recent House Ways and Means state aid to the city, that is down even more than original, than in the governor's budget. It will go to the Senate and eventually it'll get worked out between the House and the Senate. The same is true for education aid. And the fact of the matter is, regardless of how you want to put it, education aid from the state is based on enrollment. Our enrollment is down significantly and thus our student aid is down significantly. And so what I have to do when I put together a budget is I have to think about the whole city and everything that the people who live in this city and who pay taxes in this city want and need to live a good life in the city. I have an employee who said to me today, I live in Northampton. I pay a lot of taxes. What I know is I don't have trash pickup at all. And my roads are a mess and many other things. So I just want you to think about all of the services that are provided in this budget and the fact that I have to think about that and make sure that all of the departments are funded in a way that makes them able to provide the services that they want to serve, want to provide, including the schools. And added to that is we must produce a balanced budget. So I'm all ears if there are other ways to do that. And I look forward to a discussion with you that understands the reality of what we have here. We have a city with different departments that have to all work together. And we really are all in this together. So understand that I, I can address other aspects of what was said here, Medicaid reimbursements, close to the general fund, but at the end of the day, it's given back to the schools when we fund the schools. Tonight, you will vote on a appropriation to contract stabilization that's made, or to fund the teacher contracts that's made up of money from contract stabilization and from Medicaid reimbursement. That was not reluctantly given. That was a result of a conversation with the superintendent of schools and the finance director, looking at the contracts that need to be funded and how we might get that done. It was not reluctantly given. We just have to find the money. And that is what we came up with. So I think Dan, I was impressed with your questions about the transportation budget. I'm happy to provide you with some information from the accountant on the transportation budget. With regard to student spending, the minimum is $14,246. The city of Greenfield spends $16,883. That is the most recent information from Desi. We consistently fund over the minimum, which is something that we want to do. I have probably more experience on the school committee than most of the, on a school committee in the city of Greenfield than most of our school committee members do. And I know what it means to be faced with budgets that have to be cut, not just on the city side now as a result of being mayor, but many years of experience on the school committee side. It is not fun. And always, always, always hard choices have to be made. I understand that. And I would have loved to have been able to give more money to the schools this year, but the numbers just don't support it. But I also want to mention something that I put in the budget memo that I hope you read when I submitted the operating budget. And that is that this is a moment in time budget. We are forced by the schedule that the city, that the state requires us to, to have a budget in order to fund the next fiscal year, but at July 1. And so that does not mean that as we get more revenue in, as we begin to understand what the end of the year is going to look like, that we can't come forward with a supplementary budget that will fund perhaps more funding for the schools and other departments that are going to need it. This is a moment in time budget and we have to have some version of a budget for FY 24. If, then, if the revenues support it, we can come back with a supplementary budget. Just keep that in mind. This is not the end of the world. In some ways, it is the beginning to get to what we can get done with the money that we have and maintain a tax rate that the people of Greenfield can afford.
Thank you, Mayor. I did allow the mayor to go overtime tonight because I thought she was answering questions that were brought up in the earlier part, so if anyone's keeping me on schedule. Chief of Staff, uh, Chief, here we go. Chief of Staff.
What did you call me before? Chief?
I don't know what I called you. Chief La, that's what I called you one night, so.
Wait, wait, point of order. The, the, I would love to hear what the chief of staff has to say too, but we should just be clear that the two of them together is the mayor's office. And so the council would have to agree to allow them to go over 10 minutes. It's not just on your say-so.
Except number seven says communications from other city employees as needed by invitation. I think I just, I didn't hear.
Sure, but that would be after our questions for the mayor if you were going under that.
Could, yeah.
Just to be clear. You have to follow our rules.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Sue me.
The, I have good news. I just want to lighten it up for a sec. I was honored last week, I was nominated by Senator Joe Comifer to attend what's called the Citizens Legislative Conference in Boston as a citizen. I didn't, was not nominated as an employee of Greenfield, even though I happen to be an employee of Greenfield. It's the first time it's happened since 2019 because of the pandemic. And I just wanted to thank, thank everyone at the State House for that opportunity and let you guys know how it went. There's about, there's 40 senators, and each senator is allowed to nominate one person. Joe Comifer told me that because it is so kind of wonky and in the weeds about the legislative process, she thought I would enjoy it. She was right. I think it helps strengthen some of our relationships there with legislators. I got to speak with Joe in her office, and I got to see our state legislators in the halls and kind of mingle with folks who were from the other districts, including nonprofit and other municipal employees, as well as citizens who were advocates. We had activists from Springfield and folks who work in child service agencies in Boston. And it was just really exciting. So Greenfield was on the map. Several people had heard of Greenfield and did little claps because they heard we were doing cool things out here. I also wanted to, I wasn't sure if this would come up unless somebody had the question, but I decided, I think I want to talk for a moment about Ice Cream Alley. Because despite the fact that we are at a budget hearing with a number of teachers and educators and parents who are concerned about the budget, I've received more phone calls and emails this week regarding the street seating or taking away of the street seating of Ice Cream Alley than I did about any of those other topics. And because Caitlin Von Schmidt is on vacation, I was also manning the front office, which actually ended up being good because I knew more about this. And I also spoke with one of the owners of Ice Cream Alley. Thought he was here. And I wanted to give you guys an update of what's really happening there. The fact is that Ice Cream Alley has been licensed for outdoor seating since 2018, and no one is changing that. They are allowed quite a bit of sidewalk space, including up and down the sidewalk a little bit in front of their neighbors' areas. This has been true since they opened. In the summer of 2020, as you guys remember, we had a pandemic. And then as things were reopening, recommendations came from the state for cities and towns to allow for extended outdoor dining. Not all towns took the state up on that. Greenfield did. Many of our neighboring communities did not, so we embraced it. We actually had to push it. We actually had to convince some people to do it. Ice Cream Alley was one of those places. They had a cute setup in the street, as well as a few other businesses, some of which have stopped doing that over the years. In early March this year, with things going much more back to normal, with the increase in downtown traffic, with the increase back to pre-pandemic levels of parking in various places, and with the addition of a brand-new pocket park just steps from that area, we decided to stop doing in-street outdoor dining for restaurants, with the exception of restaurants who had gone through the process with the Commonwealth to extend their outdoor dining and liquor licenses to outside of their premises. So that, let's be clear. They went through a process that is akin to getting a brand-new liquor license, including legal notification, paying quite a bit of money, ads in the paper, public hearings, and sending paperwork to ABBCC, who then had to review their outdoor plan and approve it. Those folks were allowed to, and of the folks who got that done, the only one who's taking actual parking spaces is one restaurant, and that's Main Street Bar and Grill. So I just want to be clear. In speaking with the owners of Ice Cream Alley today, we had a great conversation. I've talked to the neighbors. He and I both agreed what has been going around the town in form of rumor, in part because of some of the information in a recorder article, was, we both agreed it was slightly inaccurate in that the decision-making on that is not about parking revenue. It was really about getting back to normal, safety concerns, and concerns of neighboring businesses that have been kind of sucking it up for the last three years and letting this happen, knowing that these folks needed to recover. And so I think the conversations I've had primarily today, after hearing from the public and talking to people and seeing what kind of dust-up has happened out there, I think we're all on the same page, and that is that it was never the folks at Ice Cream Alley who got very upset about the change. It really was their fans, which I am one of. So I also love Ice Cream Alley. So I just wanted to clear that up in a public meeting. I also read some information about this into the record at the licensing meeting yesterday. So those are the two things I had to share.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. I'm going to open up questioning to the mayor. And I just, I'll remind you that we're asking questions. And we are going to have time to debate and talk about the school budget in all the forums that are set up. So keep that in mind as we go forward. I don't want to get into debates tonight from on the floor, but questions are always encouraged. Counselor Golub and then Counselor Lapinski.
I promise questions. And I have multiple, because I've been dedicating multiple days, as a Ways and Means member, to wrapping my mind around the budget and to prepare. I wrote some, wrote some words down to help me concentrate and keep this as succinct as possible.
Are we talking about the operating budget, which is not on the agenda? Or are we talking about the capital budget, which is on the agenda?
We are talking about the operating budget, which will be on the agenda and is why so many people are gathered here today and why we have received an astounding response. We've received an astounding response from constituents. I know you said, Chief La, Chief of Staff Letourneau, that you've heard more from Ice Cream Alley. I'll tell you, today, I received, I've counted 21 emails.
I've received them all too, because I get the school committee emails.
Wonderful. I was wondering that.
Most of them.
I'm really glad that you're receiving them too.
The mayor's office directly didn't. It was ice cream.
Great. Well, it's important. Ice cream is important. I've heard from two people. I've heard probably from, I've stopped counting, as I imagine you have too. And so when we talk about what taxpayers in this city want, there, there's, I don't know about my colleagues. I've been here nine months. There's been no issue that hasn't nearly approached this one in terms of taxpayers consistently demonstrating what they want, which is for us to invest in our schools. And I appreciate the question of what can we do? And I believe that there are things that we can, I'm hoping there are things that we can do. And part of that, part of doing our job is, I think, asking you questions. And specifically, I want to reference your April 16 My Turn piece. And first of all, I just want to say, calling a teacher self-righteous for speaking up on behalf of her students really was surprising. And I do believe that it is a moral document, which is why I believe I have the responsibility to ask you these questions. So first of all, I want to reference Medicaid reimbursements. And because this is something new that I'm still wrapping my mind around, and I imagine maybe new to many people in the audience, I just want to reiterate what this is. And so to make sure that my colleagues understand this as well. So the processes of the schools pay employees to provide health services for students, most of whom are special ed students. And then Medicaid reimburses, you know this, I'm telling this, so that people get this context. Medicaid reimburses a portion of the school's investment in those employees. But Greenfield, before, but in Greenfield, before Medicaid's able to give those reimbursements back to the schools, they go into the city's coffers.
That's right.
And you, as the mayor, and the previous mayor, had the legal option to keep those funds in the general fund and not give them back to the schools. And in the last several years, that is what you and your predecessor decided to do. And in your, and this is relevant, this is relevant to what we're voting on tonight. You wrote that in your six, in your April 16 My Turn piece, you wrote, "At the April 19 city council meeting," which is where we are today, "councillors will vote on two financial orders totaling $581,850, over half a million dollars, that I put forward to assist the school department in paying for the recently settled contracts." But what you didn't mention is that over $200,000 of that is already the school's money from the Medicaid reimbursements. So it doesn't matter if you're reluctant or not about it. It's the school's money. And it's not a gift to the schools. It's not extra money. It's the school's money to begin with. And the actual problem is that until now, the schools haven't gotten that money. And so while my question that I would want to pose to you is whether you plan to reimburse the over $1.8 million that is owed to the schools from the previous five years, I'm not going to ask that question because that would be slightly flippant. And I don't, I think the answer would be, no, you're not planning to do that. But my honest question is, how are we justifying, how are you justifying not giving that money back to the schools?
That money goes into the general fund, and the schools are funded from the general fund. So you do get it back. I can't speak to what happened in previous administrations. I really can't. But I can speak to the last three years. And we have, last year, we returned one point, we funded the schools at a higher percentage, which I would have loved to have done this year, but the money didn't support it in order to achieve a balanced budget. You got over a million dollars last year from the school, from the city, out of the general fund to the schools. So it varies from year to year. If you're looking for that money, perhaps you got it last year. It's all part of the general fund at the end of the day. I don't control that. That is municipal finance and accounting. What closes to the general fund versus what closes directly to the schools. So that is plain and simple, the answer. I, the $206,000 is what we had available this year to help fund the contracts. So that is why you have that in front of you.
May I just add on to that, Mayor? Do you mind? You said earlier how you had a lot of school committee experience. I served three terms on the city council. And in those three terms, every single solitary budget season, we had a very similar debate where people came and advocated for more money for the schools. It was, it was worse some years than others. It was better some years than others under two different mayors, two different administrations, and every time it's vilified. This is municipal finance, hard things. I've worked in education for 17 years in some way or another before I came to this job, before I came to the job before this job, really. This is there, if you look at your budget book, you'll see there's 17-ish thousand dollars left. And that's it.
That's it. That's what you have left over at the end of the day here.
So I'll say I have many follow-up questions. I'm not going to ask any of them right now out of respect to my colleagues. But I have a couple more questions. I'm not going to ask the follow-up, but I am going to ask a couple of other, other questions, and I'll keep it shorter. One is, is that you wrote that in your My Turn piece, "Many other departments within the city also experienced cuts in the budget that affected staffing, the ability to create new programs, or meet expectations for existing programs." I've been combing through the budget, and I don't see any department experiencing the same cuts that the schools are. So could you tell me where those major cuts?
When I sent you your budget packet, I sent you the budget with the reductions enumerated beside each department. So in the case of the fire department, it was two new firefighters, maybe three. There's numerous places where the departments have experienced cuts. The school department gave us a 10.37 increase, I believe it was. I may have the number slightly transposed, but over 10%. That was never going to be sustainable this year. It just wasn't. We knew that going into it. I think we knew it the day we had that meeting. None of whom, none of you were there, by the way. But that's okay, because it was held in the middle of the day. So I didn't expect to see city councillors who have jobs outside of this there. You might have been there, Counselor Disorga, but I'm saying, very few of you were there. So we had a very good budget presentation. What I'd like to impart here tonight is, and I think Chair Prouetty mentioned it, yes, when I vote as a school committee member, I vote to support the schools. But at the end of the day, as the mayor, I have to look out for every department here. So the overall budget is always, as Chief of Staff Letourneau mentioned, is always going to have this tension between funding the schools and funding city departments. We have worked long and hard, at least since I've been here, not to pit departments against one another. So it's not a matter of who should. This is what I meant by moral document. What is moral? Which is, why do, why do we need to pick winners and losers? What we need to do is just work together to fund an overall budget that we can all agree does the best we can afford in this city.
I'm going to stop you right there for a second. Counselor Disorga, when this comes up to the Ways and Means Committee, is the mayor going to be available for you to ask questions to at that meeting? Is the mayor going to be there to talk about the operating budget?
Yeah, the mayor's been at every meeting on the operating budget, and I'm sure that she will continue to be there.
I am going to reiterate my initial thought is, I really want to talk about the things that are pertaining to tonight's agenda with the additions of questions that might have been raised. But I do not want to debate the budget tonight because we have a lot to get accomplished. And we have the opportunity to do this on multiple more occasions, especially at Ways and Means, who is going into the exploratory phase of the budget. So once again, I'll come back if there's questions. And I'm going to allow any questions that any of you have. But I just don't want to get into this deep debate on the budget because we're not there yet. If there's questions on the financing of the $500,000 that the mayor, Counselor Golub, great point. She said, you said it was going to be debated on the 19th, then that's a great thing to ask because that's what we're talking about tonight, how that $500,000 got to where it's going to be. So I'm just going to caution, and then I'm going to move on. If we have another question, I'll come back. But let me just make sure there's not other questions. I already believe I recognize Counselor Lapinski with questions.
All right. So I want to make a couple of brief corrections to what you just said, Mayor, and then I have a question. And they are this. The 10.3% increase requested by the schools was not an accident. It was because they have, the teachers haven't had a contract for the last couple of years. And when the contracts were finally signed, inevitably, they were going to have an increase. Second, you said that you, there, you can't fund the schools because you had to fund city departments while the schools are a city department. I just want you to know that. The rest of us understand that. This question isn't about the operating budget. President Gwynn, this is about the article that the mayor wrote about the operating budget. And I do think it's okay to ask about that at this meeting. So when you say that you don't think that the budget is a moral document, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to explain why, because I thought it was.
I think I explained. There is, when you attach a moral equivalency to a certain section of the budget versus something else, you are excluding the moral equivalencies of the rest of the departments.
Sorry, we lost the screen for a minute. I wanted to make sure we didn't lose our audience. It blacked out for a moment. Sorry, Mayor.
I saw waving over here. I just wasn't sure what it meant.
Yeah.
So that is why I say that. It is difficult to make hard decisions, but, which I do every day about many things. But it is overall, and I didn't say we can't fund the schools because we have to fund other departments. What I said was, this budget represents schools and the city. And we all have to be able to. to reach a balanced budget somehow. We will get there, I am sure, by the end of May. But I'm hopeful that you do not choose, pick and choose who suffers one way or the other, but that we try to come up with some solution that works. I support our schools. I always have.
That wasn't my question.
But at the same time, I need to now, as mayor, look at the whole picture of how we deliver services and where are you going to decide somebody doesn't get a service or we don't get to staff needed positions here and there when everybody needs something in this budget.
Okay. But Mayor, that wasn't my question. My question was...
I'm not sure what's your question. You asked me about a moral document, and I said, this is why.
What I asked was specifically, on what basis would you consider, and just so you know, you're, I think you may not understand what people mean when they say moral document, because the description you just gave is something that describes the budget as a moral document, not as something else. What people mean when they say that is that the way that you make the inevitable cuts is a representation of where you're placing your value. I know there's someone in the audience now that has a sign that says, what you fund is what you value, and that's fundamentally the definition of a moral document. So I think it might just be a little bit of a confusion on the term. But with that said, once again, in your remarks just now, you said that you don't just have to fund the schools, you also have to fund the city. Do you, or do you, that is just what you said.
I said, we have to fund the whole, what I value is every department that works for the city and every employee in the department that works for the city. The city includes the schools. That is what I value. So that is what I have to look at at the end of the day.
Any additional questions?
President Gwynn.
Councillor Bullock, and then councillor Ricketts.
Yeah. Okay. First of all, very excited to hear about the HR grant. Some months ago, there was students who did a small study about Greenfield. I think I brought it up at a city council meeting, so...
Long time ago.
Yep. That was very exciting to hear, and I think very much so needed. And I do hope that it'll move beyond directors into some of our lower salaried and wage employees in the city as well. You know, I have to frame this as a question, so I'm going to. But what I think I'm really stuck on here is that there's two pieces. I know you said you don't want us to pull, have to pull from other departments, but we're in a position where we're going to be forced to do that now. And what I heard you say, and I guess this is my question, is that, what I heard you say is that this is a moment in time budget and that there could be a supplementary budget. And so what I want to hear when you say that is that there's more money coming and what, or there's a potential for more money to come. But there's no promise of that. And there's no, like, I understand the city has to have revenue in order to make a budget that's balanced. And the flip side of it is that I do believe what our city wants and what our city needs is to truly invest in our children. And I will say that I have so many conversations with parents, with family and friends who wanted to move out of Boston during the pandemic. You know, I've been out here for 15 years now in Greenfield, and they're like, the schools are terrible. The schools are terrible. My kids are in school in Greenfield, right? The schools are not terrible here. But what happens here is that, what councillor Tronzo was saying, right? When we start to lose these extracurriculars, when we start to lose the things that make schools well-rounded, the teachers pick up the slack. And so we're very lucky in Greenfield to have amazing teachers who make the education of students amazing, but they're dealing with not having the foundational things that they need, right? And so no one is coming to Greenfield and saying, you know what, these kids are smart enough. Like, we don't need to fund the schools anymore here in Greenfield. And so it's really hard when you come and you say, this is a moment in time budget, there could be a supplemental budget, to trust that our children are going to have enough and get enough and be fine. You know, to think that my son, who's been waiting for strings for kids, when he gets to fourth grade, because his older sister did that, won't have that same opportunity, it's terrible. It's terrible to think about. When my daughter was that age, we didn't have money for her to do music lessons. The only reason she knows how to play an instrument is because of Greenfield Public Schools and that program. And so unless I'm hearing from you, this is a moment in time budget, and I'm making a promise to supplement this budget in the coming year, we are forced to pick and choose from other departments. That's the only power we have. And so, yeah, I guess my question is, like, what are we to do? Trust that there's a supplemental budget that's coming or pick and choose from departments to balance our budget by June?
So councillor Bullock, I appreciate your story, particularly about your children, because I had children who grew up in these schools too. And I had a son who loved drama and was in many, many plays. But at some point, very shortly, I think just shortly after his senior year, the drama department had to be cut. So I get those things that happen, because I was there as a member of the school committee. But I wish I could promise you, I'm saying, we have the revenue coming in that we have coming in, and it doesn't come in all at once. It would be nice if it did, but it doesn't. So we do a reconciliation at the end of the year, and we see where we are with the revenues. And then we eventually set the tax rate. You're all here for that. But at some point, if there is more revenue, yes, then there is probably a way to create a supplementary budget. But I cannot promise you that, and I would not want to promise you that. It would be irresponsible for me. What I have presented to you in the FY '24 capital operating budget, which we persist in talking about here, so I think councillor, it's not funny. Of course, it's not. But we will have an opportunity to discuss this over the next several weeks. But what I have presented to you is a balanced budget. $21.6 million is still going to the schools. How they spend that money is important, and a lot of it goes to staff and their salaries, which is as it should be. Everyone should be paid a living wage here in Greenfield and the ability to both live here, work here, and enjoy not only their work, but living here or living wherever they live. The same is true for the other departments in the city. Most of what you have in front of you is contractually obligated. There isn't a lot of room after that. And I think Danny mentioned that at the end of the day, what we have left is about $17,000 and change. Our state aid in the House Ways and Means budget was just reduced to about that same amount of money. So I'm saying what we need to do is work together to advance what Greenfield needs. And we need to be, in addition to working, I get that you ultimately have to take your votes to come up with the same balanced budget. And that's what I'm saying. We have time. That's what president Gwynn is saying. We have time to work on that together, not pit each other. Don't make me the enemy. I'm willing to work with you to the extent that I can and within what we are required to do by law.
Councillor Ricketts, and then councillor Bottomley.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. I don't have any questions. I'll be watching and seeing what's going to progress over the next few weeks. But I do want to caution that we be careful about not saying it's not the end of the world. We're talking about children, taking away music or sports or some good teachers. That is the end of the world when you're talking about children. So I want to be very careful.
I'm going to recognize councillor Bottomley in one second. I just, a thought that I don't want to lose. One is, a lot of the things that you're all saying tonight, and I talked about councillor Disorga bringing this up at Ways and Means, I'm writing down like a madman in here, you know, priorities, listings, you know. I'm not going to ask those tonight, because this is good conversation. But now I know what I'm going to ask, and I'm going to, and I might not ask it personally, but I'll say to councillor Disorga, can she promise her priority list? Can she do those kind of things? And I encourage you all to do that. This is what we're doing tonight. So as we're, as someone says something, I've picked out, I think, something from all of you tonight and wrote it down, and I will ask those questions. I won't ask them tonight, but I will ask them. Councillor Bottomley.
Thank you. This is just a question for the mayor. I'm hoping going forward, as we talk about the budget in Ways and Means, we have approximately $6 million in stabilization accounts. And I know that those are put there for a very important reason, for various reasons we set them aside. But the money is there. It's kind of our rainy day savings accounts. It's a lot of money. And are you at least open to the idea of considering issuing us financial orders to transfer some of that to the schools? Because we, as a council, cannot move those funds, no matter how much we want to, without a financial order from you.
I would need more information on what it is you're looking at, and so I'm hoping that you're working towards that. I do need to caution everyone here that the stabilization funds are there for use. They are not there to deplete. And it would be very detrimental to our ability to borrow if we got ready to borrow for some of the bigger projects that we have in the pipeline already and not have appropriate amounts in our stabilization funds at the end of the day when we get ready to do that. So while there is some wiggle room, I guess I might say, or some ability perhaps to use, do some, keep in mind, there aren't that many, because some are dedicated to different reasons, and we can't change that without multiple, with additional votes. In other words, capital stabilization is just for that. It's for capital projects. There is some money in stabilization. There is some air there. But again, we have to keep that, as you say, a rainy day fund, believe me. The state holds on to its money, too. So again, there's a reason for that, and it has to do with the overall ability of the city to maintain its financial strength, which it does have. And that's a good thing for a city the size that we are. And that's because we have done smart municipal financing and made choices and developed policies around that. So I'm looking forward to some recommendations. As I just said, I am here to work with us to see if we can solve this, understanding at the end of the day that, you know, it's only going to be able to fund what we feel like we can fund.
Councillor Mayo?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hit the right button. Anyway, I'm concerned, I'm on page 12 of the budget book, the budget message from the mayor. And we've been, some of the councillors have been talking about a moral document, and I believe that the budget is a moral document. It's being a union president in the past. I'll just preface this by saying that I believe in parity in pay. But what concerns me is halfway down the page, it says the need to retain highly qualified department heads and supervisory staff within all departments, overall 3% per department head, some increase, and slightly over 3% to reflect the need for parity and to remain competitive for those positions. What, I'm not concerned with parity. I used to be a union president. I wholeheartedly believe in parity. But what concerns me is we're, as a council, we're looking for, where can we pull from? And when you say things like slightly over 3%, maybe that's where we could pull from, slightly over. We need more specific numbers than slightly over. So maybe that slightly over is where we could pull from. That's just what I want to say. Thank you.
Can I respond? So councillor Mayo, what we're talking about here, Greenfield is unique in some ways in that many of our department heads are called NRS. That means nonrepresented. They are not, they do not have a union behind them, some of our department heads, and do, and some at the supervisory level are represented by a unit called the S-Unit, or SSEA. But S for short. So what I'm speaking of are the NRS, many of whom did not have a raise to speak of, and certainly not 3% in 2020, 2021. So we've had to play a little catch-up here and there. And in order to keep really good people, we have to be able to hopefully raise their salaries within the boundaries of the 3% every year, always. That's what we tend to put forward. But in some cases, it needed to be a little more. So that is what I'm speaking about. And those percentages are probably not reflected, because unfortunately, we had to make reductions in different departments. So just understand that most of our department heads received a 3% increase in their contracts this year, with one or two exceptions.
Are there, councillor Disorga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, we currently have in our stabilization accounts $6,252,658, which is 10.8% of our operating budget. $1 million of that actually, last week, neither the financial director nor you were aware that we actually had that million dollars extra. And the Department of Revenue, I believe, suggests that we have like 3% to 5% in stabilizations. So I am going to ask you a question. I am concerned about that amount and the amount that we will potentially have after tonight left in free cash. Currently, there's $595,000 in free cash. After one order that I'm pretty sure will go through, we'll have about $390,000. Would you be willing to commit some of that to helping with the school's budget? I think some of the people here tonight might like to know the answer to that. I'm looking for recommendations from the Ways and Means Committee. Thank you very much. Keeping in mind that many of those stabilization funds have, they weren't created Keeping in mind that many of those stabilization funds have a, they weren't created out of whim, they were created for a purpose, so, and, and we need to keep, keep that in mind, that have to do with future, and have to do, the particular account you were talking about is called pension stabilization.
Correct.
Our teachers have, and our other employees have pensions, so it depends on where you want to take the money from. I'm looking for your recommendations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not soliciting questions, but is there anyone that has not asked a question that would like to ask a question before I move to Counselor Bullock, who has a question? Anyone that hasn't asked? Okay. Counselor Bullock, do you want to wrap this portion up tonight?
Yeah, this is not about the school budget. I heard it was, you know, slipped in there that our chief of police is, is back, the official word is that he's back. I'm wondering why we don't get information on these things in real time. So there was many questions, there was many rumors, there was news stories, there was emails. I'm wondering why we weren't told, hey, the chief is out of office.
Well, some of what you're talking about is confidential information. It's, has to do with HIPAA, it has to do with medical status.
True, that sharing that he's on FMLA is HIPAA protected, but sharing that an employee is out of the office is not, and I believe that your office was asked many times if he was on the job or not.
Chief has been on the job when he, I mean, obviously, he has vacation time, he has the ability to be out of office under his contract, and he has the ability to get sick every now and then and need, need to take time. So what you're asking is not, one, able to be discussed in a public meeting, so the chief has been chief of police since he came back in September.
Right. What I'm asking is that
I know what you're asking.
In the future.
When you say, I, I don't know exactly what you're asking.
So in March, you asked me, I think we, I was here, I think it was just me here, right? Is that March?
Yeah, I sent an email, too.
I had just gotten back from vacation. The chief of police was on vacation. He had a flight that was canceled. That was all true, I was asked about it. He was on vacation. He was still on vacation. He came back to work. He was in the office for a while. Shortly after that, he went on FMLA leave. He has given permission at this time to, for the mayor to tell you all that he had taken an FMLA leave in between a time in March and now.
Okay.
What we said at the time was accurate. I didn't know that he had planned on becoming ill. We, he was on vacation.
I think what I'm asking for is in the future, that there is accurate information. You don't need to share confidential health information with us, but we do, I believe, need to know Deputy Gordon is filling in at this time, this, this department head is out of the office. You don't need to know it's for FMLA, but there was many questions from constituents, from the press, from lots of places around, do we have a chief of police that is currently working and in the office? And we, I know for myself, as a city council, cannot answer those questions with facts. So I'm not asking for confidential health information, I'm just asking for accurate information on whether or not a department head's in the office or not, in the future.
With all due respect, I am the chief of staff, and I don't necessarily know off the top of my head which department heads were out of the office today. I know you're talking about the chief of police in a very specific thing, and I get what you're saying, and I get given everything that's happened this year, but I think what you're asking for is beyond the scope of the city council.
I think this is a, we, we can talk about this later, we have a meeting next week, but I think that this is a specific situation where when we are in a place where we don't have overnight shifts that are completely ironed out, things are like, we're in a tense budget time, there's rumors swirling around about whether or not we have a, a chief that's on the job. I do think it's important for the city councilors to know accurate information, and I think that this isn't one of those things as like, did a department head take a day off? This is like, we're talking about like a month.
How do you think that we got the 3 to 7 shift covered if the chief was not on the job?
Point of order. This is for the council to ask the mayor questions.
Meaning, what I meant by that is to say that it is through his negotiations and through his work that we have that shift covered at this time. So he was on the job doing his work.
I'm not, I'm not
This is really beyond the scope of the city council. It is not on the agenda tonight. I brought up the status of the chief at his request, so that people would understand that.
Point of order.
Counselor Bottomley.
It is a city council meeting. I believe you preside over it, and it's our decision what we discuss in our meeting.
I, I would agree that our scope is based on questions and, and concerns. I think we've addressed that, I don't think you got the answer you, you asked for, but we'll move forward in just saying, you know, I don't want to speak for people, because we have a tendency to lean towards that in this municipality. I just want to say, I think some of the councilors would just like information, because it makes us look like we don't know when people call me and say, is, you know, this happening? And, and I'm not asking, as Counselor Bullock was, for inside information, just an answer that we can give the public. So I want to stop it there and, and move forward. Are there any other questions? To the, to the Counselor Bullock's question? Narrowly, Counselor Apagianski, let's just get this moving forward. We have a lot of people that are here tonight and
Fine. So I guess my position would be that not only is it the purview of the city council to know whether or not we have a police chief, but it's the purview of every single person in Greenfield. And I would say that because among other things, we pay $175,000 a year for that privilege.
We have a police chief, we've had a police chief. He was out sick for a while. That is what occurred.
At any time, was William Gordon named acting chief because of that?
No.
No.
I don't know what timeframe you're talking about.
At any time
This March, April.
During this FMLA.
No.
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 No. He was deputy chief during the whole time.
Correct. So there was a period of time where the police chief was out, and we did not have someone who was named in his place, and that is something I think the public
No, that is what the, that is what the role of a deputy chief is. So Deputy Chief Gordon is, regardless of why the chief is out of town, I mean, if he's out for half a day because he had to go to a meeting someplace, that's different. But if he's out for a certain period of time, it is Deputy Chief Gordon who becomes and takes on the role of the chief.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We are going to open up public comment, so thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief of Staff We'll, we'll save that for a moment. I do want to caution everyone that we are going to be taking a break at 8:30, which is in, is a, a policy, so I don't want anyone to think that I'm cutting anyone off, but right around 8:30, we will be taking a short recess. I will follow this, and is there a sign up for public?
Public hearing.
Okay. I'm just checking. These are all under public comments. Counselor Disorga, we have no one on the list for public hearings when we get to that, just so you know.
Public hearings right here. Sounds about the capital.
Yep. All right. I'm going to open public comment. Once again, this is open, we, we have a huge agenda tonight. I know that all of you are here to tell us information that we need and will use. I will ask that if someone speaks before you and addresses a lot of the same things, you can reference them in, and try to move things along, but I'm not limiting what you're having to say at all. You all get all the time that, that you want, within the three-minute designation. All right. Julie Carew? And once again, when you come on, make sure the green light is on your microphone, and then state your name and your address for the record.
All right. Hi, I'm Julie Carew. I live at 382 Adams Road. Thank you for letting us talk to you tonight. I'm the director of Strings for Kids and also a GPS parent. I understand that some of you may be feeling a little irritated perhaps by the emails that you've been getting about Strings for Kids, and I hope that you can see them for what I truly believe they are, a passionate expression of the fear of what is going to happen to our schools if these cuts are put into effect. As GPS parents and community members who value the arts and varied experiences for the students in Greenfield, looking at this adjusted budget, the picture is bleak. With the elimination of middle school sports and cuts in other middle school extracurriculars, I wonder what the alternative will be for students for whom these are their primary after-school activities. If middle school Spanish is eliminated, students who have not yet had the chance to learn a second language will miss out on the chance until high school, missing the best window for beginning language learning, and students from native Spanish-speaking backgrounds will lose the chance to connect with the señora send, the only Latina teacher at GMS. Greenfield has already seen huge changes to the music programs. In the last few years, we lost the full-time band program at the middle school this past year, elementary chorus the year before that, and will use, will lose 4th grade band this coming fall. Strings for Kids was set up to be the program that wouldn't be cut, because the schools only partially fund it and do not run it, and yet, here we are. In the past, administrators at GPS have agreed that Strings for Kids is a huge asset for the school's curriculum, for students, and for the city. Strings for Kids is more than a music program. Over the last few years, we have made it a primary goal to be a steady force in the lives of our students and provide stability and continuity through whatever life throws at us and them. We address societal concerns with our students and explore what it looks like to think and be and experience life as a musician and as an appreciator of other musicians. We work to expand our students' musical horizons in all kinds of ways, talking about difficult parts of history, helping them to discover music and musicians they may not have ever had the chance to see. We build community among our young musicians and see that our students come together and support each other in remarkable ways. If our school budget forces the removal of all except the necessities, we can't expect or even hope that things will get better. This eliminates many of the things that contribute to the education of well-rounded humans. School is about more than the core subjects, and I hate to think where we'll be in a few years without all of these extras. One of the major concerns in GPS is the number of students that are leaving. In our district, where we lost nearly 60 students this past year, I have no doubt, with priorities like these, we will lose far more going forward. I'm asking, pleading for you to do everything you can, and I fully understand the limits of that, in your power to fully fund the superintendent's original proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ruthie McDonald, and then Vern Sun. I'm going to break a quick moment of my policy. I'm not going to address what Julie said, but I'm going to address a piece of what Julie might have mentioned. If anyone on this council is irritated because they're receiving emails from our community, they shouldn't be on this council. Don't ever think we're irritated. Okay.
Hello, my name is Ruthie McDonald. I live at 128 Barton Road in Greenfield. I have an 11-year-old and a 14-year-old who are both attend Greenfield schools. I grew up here, as did my husband. We chose to raise our family here. I've been a longtime supporter of this town. I shop locally, I eat in local restaurants, and participate in city activities. From my perspective, Greenfield has a lot to offer, and I've been optimistic about our city's future. However, over the past few years, it has become more challenging for me to see my family as part of Greenfield's future. My kids' education and having a fulfilling experience at school is critical to the choice my husband and I made in settling down here. Over the years, we've seen programs cut, resources reduced, excellent staff leaving the district, and students who are our friends leaving for other schools. I've been an active PTO member and volunteer in the schools for the past six or seven years. I've heard firsthand the financial hardships and staffing challenges a school's face every day. The PTO does what we can to supplement some gaps, funding for playground equipment, after-school materials, games, project supplies, family events, or school dances. We shouldn't have to ask families in this community for money to fund any of these things, but we do. Our school budget should cover it all. More importantly, the school budget should pay staff adequately and competitively and cover the resources our kids need for their education, school activities, and other enrichment opportunities. I've been complacent far too long by not using my voice when it comes to bigger picture in our schools. We should no longer accept mediocrity for our kids. Our schools need to be fully funded, which means catching up from years of not prioritizing our students and staff. What message does it send to our kids here and all over the country when school budgets are not adequately funded? What does it say about the value we place on the schools? I've been in marketing for 15 years, so I'm going to share my thoughts from a return-on-investment standpoint. When planning out your marketing spend, you want to put the money towards efforts that are effective. There are numerous studies demonstrating that investing in education leads to better economic growth on a local and national level. Fully funding our schools and supporting the foundation of our community will yield the greatest return on investment. According to ParentsForSchools.org, in underfunded schools, students often must deal with large class sizes, fewer advanced classes, lack of resources, less experienced teachers, and in some cases, no teacher at all. Make the smartest investment decision for our city by fully funding Superintendent DeBarge's original budget request, not a trimmed-down version of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vern Sun, followed by Elizabeth Denis.
Vern Sun, 81 Barton Road. Most of you know me. I'm disappointed the way the mayor's brought this up. And every, I, I grew up in Greenfield, I went to Greenfield schools, and my daughter and my grandkids are going to school here. And it's hard to believe that somebody would cut something that kids grow on, rather than make it so it can go forward. Now, I, the middle school and all those schools, if you cut down the sports, they learn discipline by going into having sports, you know, they, they take care of, and take, take into sports and everything. They learn how to discipline, so they can get better in their classes, so they can do, do different, do different things at home as well as eventually on the job. Unless you have that discipline, you're going to fall flat on your face. And by that, you need all the education you can get, no matter what it is. You don't want to have to do what I did for 21 years to get my education, and that's working for government here as well as the federal, and you, you can get money if you work at getting it. So I, I just think you need to fund the schools in any way possible, and you got the all the, you know, cash reserved, you know, reserve cash and that, but if you use it smartly, you can make, make the budget that the school puts forward and not go into anything else.
Elizabeth Denis, followed by Shane Timmy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Denis. I live in Greenfield, and I'm a member of the I live in Greenfield, and I'm a member of the school committee, and you should have my statement in your packet. I'm going to read it with some additions. I'm really glad that the mayor brought morality into the conversation in her recent midterm because I do think the budget is a moral document. And if she's always had a problem advocating for fully funding the school since her more experience than anyone time as a school committee member, then that's a problem that we need to remember for this future election year. She said tonight that you have to decide who gets to suffer. I have a feeling we can all agree that children are not the ones who get to suffer. The mayor's budget cut sends a really strong message to all of us and to future residents. It says, "Don't move here. Don't send your kids here." It says, "In Greenfield, our priorities are entirely out of whack. This is irresponsible and unacceptable, and I don't want to live in a city that does this." We have well-educated citizens who have published blogs and disseminated information about the FY24 detailing what is possible and where the money should come from. The real question is whether the mayor has the will to support our educators and our students. Massively overfunded police and chronically underfunded schools are linked. I'm not sure if the mayor's intention is to strengthen the school-to-prison pipeline, but it sure seems that way. Underfunded schools create higher crime rates, and rates of incarceration are directly related to education levels. We need to shield our youth from disinvestment during downturns. So it is time for you, the city council, to demand an alternate budget that fully funds the schools. Demand justification for every penny diverted. If not now, when? Next year, when it's worse? The year after, when more educators leave? When does it end? It is neither disrespectful nor subversive to say no to this. It is time for the council to exercise its full powers of oversight. Please exercise your full ability to protect this community from her poor decision-making. Thank you.
Shane Toomey, followed by Catherine Mar...
Martini. My name is Shane Toomey. I reside on 20D Phyllis Lane, and throughout the entirety of my schooling, I have been a Greenfield Public Schools student. In that time, I've seen countless friends and classmates come and go, cycling in and, for many, out of Greenfield Schools. Families have chosen to relocate in hopes of better opportunities for their children, and then they are lost to another district. This is not a foreign occurrence. It is a prevalent issue that we are all well aware of in our city. Student enrollment numbers have been reportedly decreasing, and we're struggling with losing kids to surrounding areas. As students continue to seek alternative means of education, the act of continuing to cut the programs in which we offer seems wildly counterproductive. If the goal is to find ways to boost school attendance, removing middle school sports, Strings for Kids, and high school business classes is by no means the way to go about it. The argument is that there's not enough revenue to support the budget already consisting of cuts, that revenue deficit being due to our low enrollment numbers. If we seek to raise our revenue from the schools, we cannot continue to cut the integral programs that we offer that would convince kids to pursue a Greenfield education. I've watched the people around me transfer in pursuit of better academic opportunities, better athletics, and many other reasons. By continuing to cut what we already have in these fields, not only will students continue to leave in pursuit of somewhere that fits their desires, but we vastly hinder any efforts in bringing people into our district. Not only are we losing the students we have, but the ones who stay will lose countless crucial opportunities to develop throughout their school careers. Sports, music, and extracurriculars allow students to bond and pursue their interests. By cutting these, students will miss valuable possibilities to develop relationships and follow their passions, and they will seek those opportunities at other districts. We need to consider the facilities offered to students and hold it in a balanced regard with other departments in town that seem to overshadow the schools so often. Education is a highly important piece of any community, and yet it seems as though when it comes to funding that education, it is not held to a fitting degree of importance. That money could be going to addressing the attendance and revenue deficit in our schools, and for that to happen, schools and their programming need to be viewed as the priority that they are. Thank you.
Catherine, followed by Jessica Farwell.
I'm Catherine Martini of Greenfield. I'm here to help you better understand the impact on Greenfield's student outcomes should the proposed underfunding of our schools occur, especially the impact on students who have less and disabled students. We are a district where, for many years, just a third of students have been learning to read, write, and enumerate proficiently, outcomes even more dismal for low-income and disabled students. Greenfield is not different from many other districts in this literacy crisis that has been quietly undermining our country, but our school department is taking initiative, like other districts, to turn this around. Lack of funding now threatens this progress, and it could not be more urgent that community leaders understand what students need in order to learn. All students need curriculum and instructional materials grounded in cognitive science and a consistent teacher, highly trained, and evidence-based instructional methods. Some students need this more intensively from a more highly-trained teacher in a more specialized methodology. These materials and trainings don't come cheap, and many districts have struggled to change from the ineffective programs and practices of the past. Massachusetts has provided new incentives for districts to invest in better instructional materials. Greenfield has done the right thing by taking this opportunity to buy and implement a new ELA curriculum resource built on the science of reading. This is one step toward ensuring that the 95% of students who are able to learn to read do. To sustain this, we need to be able to maintain ongoing professional development and retain those teachers and replenish instructional materials for new students every year. Underfunding the school budget is threatening those priorities. Greenfield has also invested in training teachers and highly sought-after credentials in specialized structured literacy methodology for the up to 20% of students who are dyslexic, students who can and will learn to read given appropriate intervention early and consistently enough, students who don't get this opportunity when we lose expert teachers. Greenfield is suffering from a much higher rate of attrition than most districts in the region. This is a multifaceted problem, but you cannot escape the fact that we pay an average teacher's salary considerably less than most reporting districts in this state. All students suffer academically when they lose a teacher, but disadvantaged students suffer more. Other communities with high rates of disadvantages have achieved high rates of student success by committing long-term to direct, explicit, evidence-based instruction and investing in their staff. Leaders in those communities acted because they knew that illiteracy is a major predictor of incarceration, poverty, depression, addiction, and every other social ill we face, and that literacy is the single best predictor of resilience to trauma. There was a time when we didn't know how the brain learns things like reading, but that time has passed. Now that we know better, we have to do better. Greenfield students are capable. The question is, what opportunities will these students have if they learn foundational skills at school, and what opportunities will they have if they don't? I submit to you that there is little more important than funding our school department. Tonight, I'm specifically urging you to... May I have 10 seconds? ...to vote no on appropriations from Free Cash for paving the Legion Avenue parking lot, installing a roof over the back stairwell of the police station, and installing the installation of bocce courts at Beacon Field. I am also asking you to vote no on appropriation from Capital Improvement for wayfinding map development at Rocky Mountain and Highland Trail. Please make these statements about your values today and make the hard cut...sorry, hard cuts necessary in May so that Greenfield Public Schools can be fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. The council will take a five-minute recess at this time. The council will take a five-minute recess. We will return with public comments. 8:37, Jessica Farwell. Jessica, I apologize that everyone's not back yet, but I'm just going to continue.
That's okay. I'm a teacher, so I'm used to people not listening to me. My name is Jessica Farwell, and I live at 202 Munson Street. I'm an eighth-grade teacher in a different district. This is my 20th year in public education, and I'm the mom of three kids who have been students in the Greenfield Public Schools. Currently, I have one in kindergarten and one in fifth grade. Since my youngest entered AEL in 2013, I've seen such a disappointing downward trajectory in our schools. I had such a hope with the new high school building, a new superintendent, and exciting programs at that time. I was thrilled to send my kids, and they had a really great start. From the beginning, one draw was the music program, specifically Strings for Kids. My husband and I are both lovers of music, and we wanted our kids to gain that same love and same experience. Year after year, we see programs cut. The ELT grant that had created opportunities, and enrichment at the middle school in Newton was gone, and then band and chorus, and now String for Kids and middle school sports and Spanish, and then I just heard other things that I wasn't even aware of. And I totally understand the dilemma in funding, and I have outrage at the entire system, just like the mayor wants us to. But I...and I know we need to go to the state, but we don't have time. We need something to happen now for all the people of this town. I know firsthand how challenging things have become in schools over the last 20 years and in the last three specifically. I see the cuts that are outlined, and I know that those are people who we so desperately need and who already don't have the support, pay, or resources that they need. When I see cuts, I see teachers getting more and more stressed and stretched, and their time spread thinner for kids who need and deserve so much support right now. I see kids' struggles getting greater under dwindling programs and the adults just getting more stressed, and I hope it doesn't end up that way that I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Toomey. Jake, followed by Jesus.
Hi, my name's Jake Toomey. I live at 20 Phyllis Lane in Greenfield. I'm a parent of four kids in the district, three who are on the tail end of being out, and a 21-month-old who will be possibly moving into the district. And I say possibly because that's a real question of my wife's in my mind at this point. I'm talking about the budget. I wrote a whole statement, but I feel like all the points I wanted to make were made really well. So I'm going to shift a little bit, and I do want to advocate for the operating budget and support that, but I also want to speak to the capital budget and shift a little bit there. For those that don't know, I'm a former employee of the Greenfield Public Schools. I was a teacher, I was a school principal, I was a district administrator. I've worked in four different buildings, all four of the five buildings that have been in question. I want to, you know, do a shout-out to the school administration, the school committee, who's finally starting to do some work that's been asked for and needed for many years, over a decade, which is redistricting and looking at the use of our buildings. And right now, we're looking at a variety of options of how we can redistrict and send kids to our elementary school buildings in an equitable way and provide services in an equitable way, that we need to do that, and that's a priority and it needs to get done. But I want to, you know, say that basically the five buildings we have are all inadequate. All the options that are being presented really aren't viable for the long term because these buildings are pretty outdated. And, you know, for who we're trying to educate now and the way kids need to be educated in the 21st century, these buildings haven't worked for us. And no matter how you configure them in the next few years, they're still not going to work for us. When I was at Four Corners, we had students taking assessments in the hallway because that was the quietest, most distraction-free space we could provide them. We did IEP meetings in classrooms while the classroom, the students were in a special in PE for 45 minutes. Having the meeting in the classroom, the students come back, pause the meeting, uproot everyone, find another available space, sit back down and resume the meeting. If you think of Federal Street, where their main office is, where the front door is, and you think of accessibility issues, security issues, or just having a welcoming environment, all of these buildings have parking limitations, traffic configuration issues. They're basically not designed for how we want to provide services to students today. There needs to be, beyond just this year and an operating budget for next year, we need to think more long-term and really invest both capital and operating expenses towards the schools and towards the future for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Nathaniel.
Hi, Jesus Leva, 32 High Street. So I'm also going to speak about school funding, but in a very different way. Last year, we had 1,848 students for our foundational enrollment. This year, we have 179...one mil...sorry. 100...1,791 students in our foundational enrollment for this year. That's a 57-student draw. Last year, because of the Student Opportunities Act, we got an additional $1.7 million from the state. This year, we were expecting an additional $1.3 million from the state as a result of the Student Opportunities Act. But because the declining enrollment of the 57 students, instead of $1.3 million, we only got $500,000 as an increase. So that is, we lost $800,000 of potential money that we were going to...we were expecting to be getting in the state because of declining enrollment. That's just a reality. We have to understand that that's part of the equation. The state, every year, calculates every community in the state's ability to be able to afford to fund their own school budget. That number can be expressed as a percentage, and for Greenfield, that percentage is 43%. They estimate that we have the ability to fund our own school budget only by about 43%. However, there are communities in the state that can fully fund to afford their school budgets at 100%, 200%, 300%, and even 900% without any state aid. Yet, all of those communities, those very wealthy communities, receive 17.5% of their school funding from the state anyway, even though they don't need the money. That amount of money in total is about $600 million, easily enough to pay for all of the tuition costs for school choice and for charter schools. That amount of money is about $4 million for Greenfield. So, yes, we should fight for every single local dollar that we can get in this budget, but at some point, it is trying to get blood from a stone, and if we're not willing to fight for state dollars, we're not going to fix this. And this is not the only community where this is happening. We should be joining together with the other 77% of communities in the state that are facing the exact same issue and be fighting for more equitable funding of schools. When the state did a study on local contributions, 40% of all of the public comments in that study came from Franklin County. So clearly, there are people here who understand this stuff. But we need to be reaching out to other districts in the state and joining with them to actually contact their legislators. If the 50 or so people who are in this room join together with all of the 50 to 100 concerned people from all of the other districts in the state that have this problem, maybe we could actually fix this.
Nathaniel, are you here? He left. Erin?
Hi, I'm Erin Anhol. I live at 111 Beacon Street. My family and I just moved to Greenfield in January. We chose to come to Massachusetts after my husband served in the Navy for 22 years. He retired. We were living in southern Maryland, and we wanted to move someplace better. We...five years ago, my friend Melissa's daughter was killed in a mass shooting at the high school that my oldest went to in Maryland, and that was kind of when we started to explore, we don't want to be here anymore. The...after that, the county commissioner in our county, is how they're funded there, decided to consistently defund the schools and fund the police more and more, which resulted in a lot of very bad things, which will happen here if the same things continue. The mayor said that she doesn't want to pit department against department, but I'm going to do that. Right now, we're looking at a school that is facing a shorter percentage of the budget over the past several years compared to the police budget, and that is not acceptable. There was a study out of the University of Michigan last year that says funding in elementary school results in a 15% less likely to be arrested for parents, not the children, the parents. the parents. Police are less needed when we are funding our schools. Crime goes down, drug addiction goes down, poverty goes down. The return on investment is huge. But beyond that, we're looking at families who will leave this community, which will result in an even larger budget shortfall. We, to be very frank and inappropriate, my husband and I are high income for this county. We know that. You will lose people like us. We left the county in Maryland. We know several other mid-six-figure earners in the county who left because they were not funding their schools. And for the first time in 25 years, St. Mary's County, Maryland, had a decline in tax revenue because people were leaving. So if you don't take money and spend it appropriately, which is going to mean we're going to have to pit some departments against each other, we're going to have to look at the police department and say, sorry, guys, you can't have another year where you get the biggest piece of the pie. Too bad. The reality is investing in our schools is going to do far more to make this community safer, to reduce drug problems in this community, and to make the community's tax revenue grow overall than it will if we keep funding other departments at higher rates. The schools should always be our number one priority, and I encourage you as the city council to reject the mayor's budget and tell her to fix it. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name's John Analt. I live at 111 Beacon Street. As you just heard my wife said, I am a retired naval officer. You know, early in the service, I did work in law enforcement, so I do echo my wife's comments. Just saying that I do have that background and I still believe in what she said. At the end of my career, I served in executive capacity. I was an officer in charge of a small base. Many said that job was akin to being a mayor. I had a police force, I had a training department, I had public works. Oftentimes, in the Navy, we do get cuts. And when leaders in the Navy say they don't want to pit departments against each other, they say each department, you will cut your budget by X percent. And they were all the same percentage. When the mayor's staff gets a 16% increase, when police and fire get 10%, when public works gets 6%, and the schools get 3% after the mayor stated that she would back the contracts for the educators' unions, that is exactly what she is doing, is she is pitting the departments together. I listened to her comments over and over again. She spoke about the non-school departments as if they were her city departments and as if the schools were something else. And that is not the case. We must fund our schools. We must take care of our children first. They are our future. So I urge the council to stand up to the mayor and ensure that she does that. Second, did not know that before coming in here, about the stabilization funds that were brought up. The mayor many times stated that this is a, this is just a momentary budget, you know, based on the circumstances we find ourselves in, that the schools need to absorb the cuts to make the balance, the budget balanced, and that the stabilization funds are for a rainy day. What is this then but a rainy day? The 1.5 million shortfall is only 25% of those stabilization funds. So, and I know that the agenda tonight was supposed to be capital. I know sometimes, you know, there's there are multi-year projects and and some are truly in the pipeline, and I know interest rates have gone up and that all has an effect. But you can still choose to pause capital projects going in the pipeline. There's other things you can do to make the budget balance, to use the 25% of the stabilization funds to balance that budget and take care of our children, and then look at the out years to make a plan that makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Is it Jim Maher? Jan, yes, thank you. And then followed by Doug.
Sorry, that was me.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Mayer. I live at 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. Before Doug, who will come after me, and I moved here in our retirement, my field was education. I taught human development and learning and a number of teacher education programs on the West Coast and in New England. My doctoral work included a deep look into the neurobiology of learning. So I'm bringing a particular point of view I haven't haven't yet heard, though. It supports just about everything I have heard. There is a substantial and growing, always growing body of research that points to these areas that have been discussed tonight as extras, extracurriculars or special programs, as actually the fundamentals. Music, drama, sports, second language acquisition, all contribute substantially to cognitive development and social emotional development. And without them, those areas are limited. So it is incredibly short-sighted to think of cutting these kinds of programs is going to produce any kind of good result for what is left, which will be the quote-unquote fundamentals, but they're not. They're no more fundamental than moving, moving through sports, dance, drama, than music, singing together, learning an instrument, than visual arts, than sports. Already, somebody mentioned the teamwork that happens in sports, it happens in drama, too. Those are fundamental skills for getting on with your life when you're out of school, but also for getting along with each other when you're in school. And if we lose them, as has been pointed out over and over again, we lose what draws families to put their kids in the public school system here. I I know people whose, who are part of, who have left the district because their kids were so poorly served when they enrolled them in in the schools here. And we also have lost a neighbor who was a wonderful para educator who who couldn't couldn't stand the stress anymore. So I am just one more voice here to say, please find however you can to fully fund the budget that was requested. That will retain and attract students. There's a real logical sequence here. Things that kids enjoy doing in school and that keep them involved in school and after school, it's thoroughly documented, improves attendance. It's thoroughly documented that attendance, when that boosts, that boosts achievement, that boosts retention, that boosts more students in the system, which boosts the funding. So please be logical about this and support our schools and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And then after Doug will be Pamela.
Evening, a long evening. Thank you. My name is Doug Selwyn. I also live at 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. And much of what I was going to say has been said already, so I will spare all of us by not saying it again. I do want to respond to Counselor Torrance, and I hope I pronounced your name right. Thinking about how school is becoming very drone-ish, et cetera, the MCAS plays a big role in that and how we have now defined learning. And as Jan was saying, what our kids need is very different than what they're required to do in school at this point. So that's an important piece of this. What I do want to say is that there's been a lot of talk and excitement about the idea of revitalizing downtown Greenfield, that that's what we need to do is to make this city hop. Doing that at the same time as underfunding schools makes no sense to me. Why would people move here if they're not going to find good education for their kids? What we have seen happen over the last several years is people leaving the district, which leaves the district with fewer resources, which means that the kids who are going to school are getting less quality education, which means that people are leaving the district, et cetera. So it's a it's a cycle that I think is really crucial to interrupt, and I think you have the power to do that. That stabilization fund, the rainy day fund, as the speaker just before me said, it's been raining on us for years. It's been raining on the state level, as Jesus said a little while ago, we're getting less money from the state when what was promised was more money through the Student Opportunity Act because kids are leaving. That's crucial. So I think we need to think about development of the town through developing our schools. And so that means that means funding them. The other thing I want to talk about very briefly is the distress I feel year after year after year with the budget process here. The budget process here is, from what I can see, and I'm an outsider in the sense that I'm not part of that budget process, but it just seems broken. It doesn't seem like it's based on us getting together and saying, who are we? What do we want? Where do we want to go? What kind of town do we want Greenfield to be? And what budget decisions do we make that will help us to move in that direction? Seems more like it's a crisis. Which fire do we put out now? Which which threatened cut do we respond to? And despite what the the mayor said earlier this evening, there's no sense that we're in this together. I I don't get any sense of that from her. I do get a sense of that from this council, that what you want to do is work together to make this this town work for all of us. And I think the changing how we go about doing the budget, where we're talking together, where you're listening to the people who live here, we suffer the consequences of whatever decisions you make. We enjoy the consequences of whatever decisions you make. So how can we stand together for a vision that that supports us all going forward? Thank you. And thanks for your work.
Pamela Goodwin, followed by Wendy Goodman.
Good evening. Thank you for all your hard work. I have so much respect for you, councillors. My name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street. Before I talk about budget, I want to put a shout out to the police department because I was the last catalytic converter victim. And the day that two detectives came, they were saying, there's not much we can do. That very same day, seven people were arrested. I'll call them alleged felons because they are so far alleged. But the state police, the FBI, our local police department, 78, if I remember the article that I read. So shout out to all the hard work because it was no fun and we have had numerous catalytic converters taken out of 54 Weldon Street. When I came to teach in this school system in 1971, the junior high, it was not a middle school yet, we had German, Latin, French, Spanish, and home ec and shop and all kinds of cool things that make for a well-rounded middle school person. Latin was the first to bite the dust. I was called a refugee when I applied for foreign language work up in Vermont. UMassachusetts refugees. So I'm going to say the same thing. Well-rounded children make for well-rounded adults. It all transfers. I'll use the example of a 17-year-old granddaughter of mine. She's now in London because of her involvement in drama. She became an accomplished flautist, but then her string person, her orchestra person, was cut. Her brother is 14. He plays three or four different sports simultaneously, swimming, lacrosse, basketball. He became a wonderful person who could play the cello. Again, he's not playing that anymore. There is nobody instructing him. This isn't a town of framing him. Another 16-year-old grandchild of mine could not read at all, didn't want to play games. We had to assess her and fix her. She became college-level reading once we figured out how to teach her, how to do the reading. She's also in drama and can memorize an entire play. My oldest grandson is now in in college. He's 19. And I do know that schools fluctuate over the years. I taught for 26 years, and you're going to lose people, but we do not need to keep losing teachers. We need to fund these children. And you've heard it all night long, they are our future. I will say one last thing. I'm disappointed that when we had a kickoff campaign for a person who wants to run against the mayor, the recorder put in one photo with grandchildren. There was no article. And I think, again, that just shows all kinds of bias that's going on with the Greenfield Recorder. Grants have come in, and it's always front-page news, and that is something that writing grants is wonderful, to get grant money because money is tight, it's nonexistent in some ways, and we need to fund the schools. And if it's at the expense of the potholes that I travel every time I have to go to the police department, then we have to figure out how to fix the potholes as well. When I was in Texas, we had cake walks, we had big sales, they have all kinds of other things. I remember sports being included, and then all of a sudden, they axed all the sports and every parent had to pay a fee to have their child play any kind of sport. So over the years, we have just really, I don't know, gotten used to doing nothing about this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Wendy Goodman? Wendy, are you there? All right, yeah, she's not been responding. Okay, I am going to close a public comment, and I appreciate if there's anyone that wanted to speak. I think we've gotten everyone. I'm going to close a public comment. Counselor Disorga, I need you at this point to read the entire public hearing notice.
Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City School will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom. HTTPgreenfieldmass.gov Zoom 9726472582 is the password. Meeting ID 97264725282 to receive public input on the following. Appropriate 116,684 from water retained earnings to fiscal year 23 water debt service accounts. Transfer 375,000 from Contract Stabilization Fund 8403 to Greenfield Public School salaries and wages accounts to fund settled contracts. Transfer 206,850 from free cash to Greenfield Public School salaries and wages accounts to fund settled accounts. Community Preservation Fund reserves, one order for appropriations. Reserve 144,537.19 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for fiscal year, community for fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund purposes, fiscal year 2022 annual budgeted reserve. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for open space. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for historical for historic resources. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community housing. Fiscal year 2024 capital budget, 18 orders. Appropriate 470,000 from borrowing to purchase ambulance. Appropriate 575,000 from borrowing for upgrades to the police station. Appropriate 186,238 Appropriate 186,238 from borrowing for three replacement police department vehicles. Appropriate 62,180 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for replacement of, of police department vehicles. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for sidewalk replacement program. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for highway fund. Appropriate 150,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization to purchase large area mower. Appropriate 55,000 by transfer from free cash for mill and overlay paving of Legion Ave parking lot. Appropriate 290,000 from borrowing to purchase a road treatment truck. Appropriate 160,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization to replace membrane roof at Old Library. Appropriate 30,000 by transfer from free cash to install roof over back stairwell at police station. Appropriate 185,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for Rocky Mountain Highland Trail wayfinding map development. Appropriate 80,000 by transfer from free cash for installation of Beacon Park bocce courts. Appropriate 195,068 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for Greenfield Public Schools Energy Recovery Unit, units. Appropriate 300,000 from borrowing for sewer, for sewer inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Appropriate 230,000 by transfer from fiscal year 23 sewer retained earnings to replace dump truck number 37. Appropriate 400,000 by transfer from fiscal year water retained earnings for water main replacement. Appropriate 45,000 by transfer from fiscal year 23 water retained earnings for Millbrook Well Number Two rehabilitation. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, April 19th, at 6:30 PM at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and Zoom. HTTP greenfieldmass.gov, gov.zoom.us, 972-6472582, password. Meeting ID 972-64725282. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Dan Gwynn, Daniel Gwynn, Greenfield City Council President.
Thank you, Councillor De Sorger. Could you read that once again a little louder? No, no, I'm, I would like to open the public hearing at 9:12. And I'm going to recognize Jesus Leva, who asked to speak.
Jesus Leva, 32 High Street. I just want to express my general support for the funding to make necessary upgrades to the police station. I think the upgrades have been clearly outlined to councillors, and if you tour the police department building, the need for those upgrades are self-evident. If there are legitimate concerns with the quotes provided for those upgrades, those should be brought up, but I hope that the politics involved in the police department isn't going to make the decisions about that. I'd also like to express my support for restoring the police department salary budget. We've talked a lot about the idea that they're getting a 12% increase in this year. That's not really quite how it works. You cut the budget last year so that actually it's significantly less than 12.5%. It's the restoration of their budget. But at the same time, we, the operation budget is brought to city councillor. Councillors should vote to reduce the proposed salary line item of the Greenfield Police Department by 175,000 to represent Chief Hague's salary. After a year of city councillors and the public requesting a response in the form of a public participatory process for the police chief, the mayor, and the Public Safety Commission regarding police department issues, we still don't have a substantive response. These issues have been clearly outlined in great detail to these officials in writing on multiple occasions with specific supporting documentation. It's time we stop giving Chief Hague the benefit of doubt that he intends to address these issues. Our police department functioned fine without Chief Hague during the summer last year when Chief Gordon was the interim chief. A primary function of the chief as the department head of the police department is to be accountable for the complaints and issues regarding the police department operations. He seems uninterested in doing this, and moreover, uninterested in earning public trust in the police department unless it's implicit and unquestioned trust in his decisions. Councillors and the public don't have the time or funds to spare for a department head who's unwilling to do his job. I think the school committee can give you a lot of reasons why they could use that 175,000 instead.
Thank you. I have no other people requesting to speak on the public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 9:14 PM. Oh, the second reading's got to go first, or?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now, Councillor De Sorger, second readings.
Appropriate 116,684 from water retained earnings to fiscal, to fiscal year 23 water debt service accounts. Transfer 375,000 from Contract Stabilization Fund 8403 to Greenfield Public School salaries and wages to fund settle contracts. Transfer 206,000 from free cash to Greenfield Public School salaries and wages accounts to fund settle contracts. Community Preservation Funds, one order. Reserve, reserve 144,537.19 from fiscal year 2022 community preservation fund resources for fiscal year 2022 community preservation fund purposes, fiscal year 22 annual budgeted reserve. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 community preservation fund revenues for open space. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 community preservation fund revenues for historic resources. Reserve 20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 community preservation fund revenues for community housing. Fiscal year 24 capital budget, 18 orders. Appropriate 470,000 from borrowing to purchase ambulance. Appropriate 575,000 from borrowing for upgrades to the police station. Appropriate 186,238 from borrowing for three replacement police department vehicles. Appropriate 62,180 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for replacement of police department vehicles. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for sidewalk replacement programs. Appropriate 200,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for highway fund. Appropriate 150,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization to purchase large area mower. Appropriate 55,000 by transfer from free cash for mill and overlay of Legion Ave parking lot. Appropriate 200,000 from borrowing to purchase a roadside treatment truck. Approaches, appropriate 160,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization to replace membrane roof at Old Library. Appropriate 30,000 by transfer from free cash to install roof over back stairwell at police station. Appropriate 185,000 by transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for Rocky Mountain Highland Trail wayfinding map development. Appropriate 80,000 by transfer from free cash for installation of Beacon Field bocce courts. Appropriate 195,068 for transfer from Fund 8402 capital stabilization for Greenfield Public Schools Energy Recovery Units. Appropriate 300,000 from borrowing for sewer infiltration, inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Appropriate 230,000 by transfer from fiscal year 23 sewer retained earnings to replace dump truck number 37. Appropriate 400,000 by transfer from fiscal year water retained earnings for water main replacement. Appropriate 45,000 by transfer from fiscal year 23 water retained earnings for Millbrook Well Number Two rehabilitation.
One correction?
Oh, please, by all means.
On the road treatment truck?
Yes.
It was 290,000, and you said 200,000. Just to slip the top.
I'd like to correct that for the record. That's the second one down. Is that correct, Councillor Elmer? Pardon me?
It's on the, it's on the top of page 34.
Right here.
Second one down there.
Appropriate 290,000 from borrowing to purchase a road treatment truck. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councillor De Sorger. Now you can take a breath for a little while. Thank you. All right, I would like to now move on to our actual motion orders and resolutions. I'm going to go to Councillor Bullock. Councillor Bullock, we have the mayor's appointments and following protocol. This is written as one motion, but we would take them individually, but if you want to read this motion.
Yep. We did not have a meeting this month, so it's coming straight to council floor. I'm going to read them as three separate motions. Just so everyone knows, Amanda Abramson did email and say that she wanted to come tonight, and I did give her a heads up that it was probably going to be a really long public comment period, so maybe she didn't want to come tonight. But she intended to be here. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirm the following appointments by the mayor. Amanda Abramson, Board of Licensing Commissioners, December 31st, 2025. Majority vote required.
Motion's been made and seconded. We did not have an A&amp;O meeting. Is there any discussion about this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Right of order.
Yes.
May I suggest that when we're doing a voice vote, that you give a little pause for the delay?
Yeah. Sometimes I'm caught off guard, just like that moment, I think I jumped out of my seat, but we're good. I see a positive unanimous recommendation. Go ahead, vote.
Order number FY23-133. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Amy McMahon, Public Safety Commission, December 31st, 2024. Short term to finish Michelle Laurie's term.
Second, 4G.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there discussion on this motion?
I have something to say.
Councillor Bullock?
This is not a reflection of the person that's named in this motion, but I am going to vote no on this appointment. I'm going to stand by what I've been saying for the last few months, that the appointments that are made to the Public Safety Commission, we have people that don't serve on boards and commissions who want to be a part of this board and commission, who have not been appointed. This is a person who serves in a volunteer government capacity in Greenfield. I don't know them, so it's not a reflection of them as a person at all. It's a reflection of this process being flawed and people not being appointed to the Public Safety Commission who are not a part of our volunteer government process already who want to be. So I'll be voting no, and we didn't, we, obviously, we, there was no recommendation out of committee.
Councillor Lepinski?
I just have a question because I can't remember. Is this the same person who we voted on last month?
No.
No. This is a different person.
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
Councillor Ricketts?
Yes, I'm very excited and happy to be voting for this person. It's a glad, it's a woman, it's a person of color, somebody who's very dedicated to this city. So we're very lucky that she wants to step up. So, so a yes for me.
Councillor Gilmore?
Yeah, just, I want to echo some of what Councillor Bullock was saying. You know, this is, we see the same names over and over, and I know that sometimes there are people who just volunteer, but we also see a lot of, you know, cronyism and quid pro quo in this town. And I feel like, you know, I mean, I won't say she's unqualified, and she's a lovely person, but we're seeing a lot of that, you know, in her circle in these appointments, and that's extremely distressing. So I'll be voting no.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this?
I would.
I'm sorry, Councillor 4G?
Yes, thank you. I would like to speak. I'm going to vote yes. This is a, a person who I think is going to bring an enormous amount of ability, different point of view, and also someone who has served on committees in Greenfield before. If I'm not mistaken, one of the most recent committees was the Fire Station Building Committee. I do think this person understands this. I do, I know, I know Amy. I do know that she understands our community very well, and I think that it's a good appointment, and I will be voting yes on this.
Councillor Elmer?
Yeah, I'm going to vote yes, too. I only know Amy from buying fajitas at her restaurant, but I'm, I'm a little disturbed that there seems to be an agenda in coming from this department that if, if the, I mean, coming from this subcommittee, that if the subcommittee doesn't get the person they want, they're going to vote no. And I'm not sure. Seems a little wrong, anyway.
Yeah, I, I will just reiterate that the subcommittee didn't voice their opinion on this candidate at all because they didn't meet on it. I just want to clarify that. I'm going to recognize Councillor Golub in one moment because I'm going to talk first. I'm going to give my opinion on this candidate. I do know Amy. Amy checks so many boxes in this community as a business owner, as someone that stands up for what she believes in. I think she would be an asset on committee. I think she'd be an asset to anything she sets her mind to, and she has my wholehearted vote tonight on this. Councillor Golub?
I'm going in between abstaining and voting no because I have nothing against this candidate, and it's, and I'm not trying to get an individual, there's, there's no individual who I'm, I'm aiming for. I know I named an individual last time, but really, that is not my concern here. My concern is, as an A&amp;O member, for months advocating for a process to create a, a Public Safety Commission that integrates a wide range of viewpoints and experience, and I have not received a single response from the mayor on that. That is what I'm wanting, and that's why I can't vote yes on this.
Anyone that hasn't spoken yet? All right.
I just want to clarify that this isn't like some kind of stalemate, or this is about, and it's not about the person because I literally do not know the person. All I know is that they currently serve on the planning board, they have served recently on other boards and committees. My MO here is that there's other people who deserve a turn to serve on boards and commissions who are not being appointed explicitly, and there's been no process outlined to deal with the bias in the appointment process. And so that's why I'm voting no. It's not about the person. I'm sure that they're lovely.
Did you have something to say again? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I want to address the issue of, like, the, the diversity issue that Councillor Ricketts raised. Thank you for raising that. It's very important to me. I share that concern of yours. I do not agree with you that it's a concern in this case because we have other people who fit those qualifications who've expressed interest. One of them is here tonight. Maria Burge has expressed interest. Mayor doesn't like her, for whatever reason. And this is a, I, I have an issue with the mayor just saying, I like you, I don't like you. The mayor is supposed to appoint people to fill these positions. There's actually... There's actually a lot of vacant positions. With that said, I'm gonna vote yes tonight, and the reason I'm gonna vote yes is not because I agree with the mayor's process, or because I know or don't know the person. It's because I see my role in appointments as vetting the mayor's preferences. So what I mean by that is, it's the mayor's job to pick the people, it's our job to determine if they're qualified. It's not our job to pick the people, so even though I would like to see someone else, because there's two people in this room who've both expressed interest, who I think would be really good, that's not my job. My job is to decide, is this person qualified? And I think she is, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Council Ricketts?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna thank you for the things that you said, and, 'cause I've seen this body. Last time, a woman came forward, she didn't get voted in because she didn't have any experience in running a meeting, and she didn't sit on any committees. So, yeah, it's a tough table, so, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Councilor Golub?
No.
Councilor Tesorger?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Abstain.
Councilor Bullock?
No.
Councilor Gilmore?
No.
Councilor Lapinski? Yes. Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor, I'm sorry, Vice, Councilor Elmer?
Yes.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councilor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. Yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Council Bullock?
Victor. There we go. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section two dash ten affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Victor Michella, Zoning Board of Appeals, June thirtieth, 2025. A change from full member to alternate member. Mr. Michella was inadvertently put forward as a full member at the March twenty-twenty-three council meeting, and this is an amendment to that appointment.
Second, Ricketts?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any discussions on this as we write this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion carries. Councilor Elmer?
Okay, this is a three-part, the first one here is a three-part, three orders about one.
Councilor, can you get that mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
What we have here is three orders about one piece of property. I'm gonna do a little bit of explanation before we go forward, as I understand.
Do you want him to read the motion before he gives us the explanation? Could you read the first motion and then give us the explanation?
There are three motions with the same explanation, but I will start with the first one.
Thank you.
Order number FY twenty-three one-three-oh-A. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield through its city council take by eminent domain so much of the fee simple interest in Verde Drive Phase Two, as well as easements described on the attached Exhibit A, and make part of this motion for the purpose of a public way. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts?
Motion's been made and seconded. Could you give us an explanation on this motion and the ones that occur?
Sure. This is, as I understand it, when a private development builds a road and puts houses in it, they do it under a set of rules, that if they do everything they're supposed to do, cross the Ts and dot the Is, the city will take over that road and make it and start giving it services, plowing the roads, picking up the garbage, et cetera. So there are three parts to this. The first part is taking by eminent domain, and we need a two-third vote for this. There are two more parts coming. It has to do with taking a quit claim, which is basically taking the deed for free, and the third part is accepting it as a public road.
Is there any recommendation by committee?
Yes. This received a unanimous positive recommendation.
And you were presented all the information from Director Werner and, and planning on the acceptance of this meeting, all the qualifications?
Yes, as near as I can tell, but, you know, it was signed off by everybody who seems to, it's supposed to have been signed, signing it off.
All right. Is there any discussion on the first motion, or any clarification anyone needs? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? We would have the two-thirds vote. Continue with the next motion.
Order number FY twenty-three one-thirty-B. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city of council through its city council accept a quit claim deed from Greenfield KMW LLC to the city of Greenfield and authorize the mayor and treasurer to take such other action to accomplish the same majority vote required. This also received a unanimous positive recommendation.
And this is a majority vote, correct?
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this portion?
Continuing the same explanation.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion passes. Councilor Elmer?
Order number FY twenty-three one-thirty-C. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city of Greenfield through its city council lays out and accepts, except, lays out and accept Verde Drive Phase Two as a public way as described in Exhibit A, attached to this motion, and made a part of it. Majority vote required. This also received a unanimous positive recommendation. This, I should have mentioned that there's a map of the drive on page forty-four, if you want.
Second. Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. This also, you said, received a positive unanimous recommendation. Once again, I'm gonna ask that question. This was brought to the directors and all felt they met the qualifications of everything we require?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Director Werner?
Did I say something wrong? Yeah, boy.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanna, for the record, in the minutes, I abstain from dealing with anything on this project. It's a family member, so it was handled by my engineering staff.
All right.
Just, just for the.
We will make note of that in the record. Thank you, Director. So that motion's been made, seconded, voted. No abstentions? Motion passes. Councilor Elmer?
Okay, we have another multi-part order having to do with a piece of property.
So, read the first motion and follow same process?
Order number FY twenty-three one-thirty-four-A-one. The city council moved that it be ordered that the city, that the Greenfield City Council declares Twenty-Nine Washington Street to be surplus property and transfers said property to the mayor for sale. Majority vote required.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Council Ricketts. Can I just find out if there was a recommendation and such from your committee?
Yes, there was a unanimous positive recommendation from the committee.
Council Lapinski?
So this property is located across the street from my house, and my neighbor, so for those of you who aren't familiar with my neighborhood, the houses are about this close together, and there's one little eensy-beensy gap in between two houses, and that's this property. The, the woman who owns the house on the south side of it, where the driveway for this property is less than thirty inches from her siding, has been working on a proposal to request to purchase this property as an abutter, and given the tremendous difficulty anyone would have in actually doing what the mayor's looking to do, and given that Bonnie was in that process already, I move to table this so that we can give Bonnie a chance to complete that process, and then if it needs to come back here again in the same way, then we can vote on it then. Move to table.
This is non-debatable, the motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second. Mayo?
The motion's been made and seconded to table this for the reasons given.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, please. Can I ask a question of clarity, not discussion? Or is it non-debatable? I shouldn't be able to ask anything. All right, moving forward. Roll call vote was asked.
Councilor Golub?
I pass.
Councilor Tesorger?
Yes.
Councilor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councilor Bullock?
Yes.
Councilor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Lapinski?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor Elmer?
Sure, yes.
Vice President Forgé?
She has.
Councilor Ricketts?
No.
Councilor Toranzo?
Yep.
Councilor Golub?
Yes.
Does the, I mean, does the president wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion passes.
Yeah, how do we, how do we wanna vote that thought? Because it tables the initial motion, so they would all follow suit as tabling the entire section.
That's fine, we're there.
Without objection. Without objection from the council, we would table all the coordinating parts to this motion. Yes, we're not gonna table it. We're gonna send it to the next agenda. That's what happens with the other pieces.
I, I, to clarify, this would come back to Economic Development Committee and your friend would, would come this time, we hope?
Okay, so I'm confused about two things. One, we're neighbors, we're not friends.
Okay, sorry.
And she's also, by that nature, a constituent, and so I'm just representing her the way I would anyone in my district. But I'm now confused on what a motion to table does. I thought a motion to table, put it on the table until we voted to take it back and put it on the floor.
Oh, this, this is in her pay grade, not mine.
So there are two motions associated with the motion that was just tabled. There's another motion.
Yeah.
So by unanimous consent of the council, so that you don't have to go through the action of tabling the second motion, it's by unanimous consent of the council to, majority, excuse me, to have this second motion go on the next council agenda.
But if the first motion.
If that's when the tabling is going to be taken up.
So then it would just be on the table, and whenever the first one is taken up?
Correct.
Which could be next month, it could be anytime.
It will travel with it.
Okay.
But it is a separate motion, which has not been tabled, but by consent of the council, it will travel with the tabled motion.
Right, that's clear enough.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
And that would apply to both of the, yeah, additional ones.
So the two pieces move together.
Correct.
That's fine. My question is, what does EDC do now? Do we have to wait for it to come back to the city council to be taken off the table? It would be useful for us to meet again with this new information.
So just for clarification purposes, when the council votes to transfer the property to the mayor and authorize the sale, it doesn't immediately go for sale. There is a publication that has to be done, I'm going back twenty years in my brain, I'm so sorry that it's so far along ago. It has to be published in the central registry, then bids are accepted for the land, then a person is allowed to purchase the property. It may not be the person that started or requested that the sale be put for town on land. It may be another person.
If I could shed a little more light on this, this is not the first time this piece of property has been put up for sale, and it was put up for sale in two thousand, the city took this property for tax title, something theft, they call it now, in two thousand seventeen, and they spent fifteen thousand dollars tearing it down, and then they tried to get a buyer who would, who would buy it with the affordability, affordable housing restriction and a stipulation to create rental housing. There were no bidders, so they're gonna start it over again and take, and let the property be used as a, as a private home, but, but affordable. Anyway, the distinction is a little fuzzy to me. I, I just wanna say, this is not the first time this, this property has been, has gone through the system.
So I'm gonna send this back to EDC and let EDC figure our process, and I'm only saying this for a couple of reasons. If there's a time element involved, even if the abutter wants to buy this, which it sounds like there's a possibility, it still has to be sent to bid, and it still has to go through the process of, of the mayor getting the opportunity to sell it, so I wanna make sure we're following that protocol. You might send it back next meeting. I'm just gonna send it to you.
Okay, got it.
Council Toranzo?
I just wanna clarify a little bit here that this, like you were saying, this would still regardless, isn't a private sale. It's, has to, procurement rules, has to go to RFP, and it's still restricted for, in the RFP, according to this, that, that the affordable housership goes along with it as well. So it's not just like, if you want to sell me the abutting land privately next door, and then I would just have more land, this has a restriction along with it, too. So if this abutter wants it, they, they need to probably know that information as well. They would have to be, their deed restricted.
Thank you for that clarification. I wanted to make, I just, the process, regardless of who buys it, there was, there was a question asked of me earlier today that I didn't know the answer to, that they wanted to know, you know, is there, is there two separate processes for it going to public, or is it going to an abutter offering? So we're gonna clarify that and, and follow through, so I'm gonna send this back to EDC, and the only thing that I want you to check on first, Phil, is to make sure that there's not a time element that I'm not aware of, and then, and then it would, I do not believe there is. So we've got a lot of work to do in the next two meetings. So, thank you. All right, let's move forward. I think we are now over to, back to Ways and Means?
Yep.
Page fifty-eight, Ways and Means. Councilor Tesorger?
Order number FY twenty-three dash one-ten. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner and in accordance with mass general law, moved.
Mass. General Law, move that it be ordered the sum of $116,684 be appropriated from water retained earnings to the following fiscal year water debt service accounts. 61007-100.5922, Water MP, 2022 principal, $66,000. 61007-510.5922, Water MP, 2022 interest, $27,532. 61007-520.5925, Water, short-term interest, $23,152. Total, $116,684. Fiscal year water retained earnings balance, $1,543, $1,543,731. Majority vote required.
Second.
Second, Forgji. Report?
Yes, please.
This got a unanimous positive out of committee, borrowing, interest rates went up a little bit, borrowing cost money.
Is there any discussion on this piece? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Disorgier.
Order number FY23-131. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner, in order to transfer from contract stabilization to general public schools to fund settled contracts, ordered that the Greenfield City Council transfer the sum of $375,000 from Contract Stabilization Fund 8403 to Greenfield Public Schools. Salaries, wages, accounts to fund settled contracts, two-thirds vote required.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendations, Counselor Disorgier.
I just want to say the contract stabilization balance listed here is $375,827.69. This received a unanimous positive from committee, but I did want to say that the information that we were given on two separate occasions in the past week, I think, says that the contractual stabilization balance is actually $475,827.69. Regardless, I think we should still move ahead, but I am questioning what the balance actually is.
So are you questioning?
Not, not the order.
Not the order, the balance.
Yes.
Would you like me to ask that question to Finance Director before we move forward?
I have that from her twice this week, but I, I just think the order doesn't match the number, that's all.
Would the Finance Director like to answer that for us? If you want to come down, please. Thank you.
The amount that I'd sent earlier in the week in the stabilization balances is correct, so if it's not the same amount on the order, it's the amount that I sent this week.
And, and that amount being 400, or?
I didn't have any.
470, that would be 475,827, $475,827.69.
Correct.
That's great.
All right. Any other questions for the Finance Director on this piece?
I'm confused, if I could ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
On this page, it says, it has a third number for the contract stabilization balance, a 375,827,69.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one that, that's Counselor Disorgier identified, the 375, but we clarified that it's 475, right?
We have an extra $100,000 right there. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Counselor Lapinski.
So I'm just curious why you put forward an order for 375 if we have 475 in there?
I believe, I not, I can't look at the timing of it, but I believe that there was another 100 added at some point that I didn't, you know, have in the record. That was the order that was put forth.
And remember, this doesn't change the order, it just changes the amount that's in the fund, which doesn't mean it's going anywhere, because if we go forward with this motion, it still leaves 100,000 more than we thought we had.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Absolutely correct.
Is there any other discussion? And once again, on the motion and the order, it received a positive unanimous recommendation. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Disorgier.
Order number FY23-132. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner, in order to transfer from free cash to Greenfield Public Schools to fund settled contracts, ordered that the Greenfield City Council transfer the sum of $206,850 from free cash to the Greenfield Public Schools. Salaries, wages, accounts to fund settled contracts. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendations on this?
The free cash balance is $595,521, and it received a unanimous positive.
Is there any other discussion on this order? Counselor Lapinski.
So I think it would be beneficial for the public to have a maybe 60-second synopsis of what the word "free cash" means, since it can often be misleading. I don't know if the Finance Director's willing to speak, I, the public deserves to know what we're talking about.
Counselor Disorgier, is this something that you could give a synopsis?
I'm going to try to, I'm trying to take a whack at that, and Director Schindler, by all means, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of a fiscal year, everybody turns back any of the extra money that we had from all various and sundry things. There's a lot of revolving clothes that, revolving accounts that close to the, to the general fund, and it's sort of like the leftover money gets certified by the state for free cash. This year, we started off with $4,002,000 in free cash, and then you can't, you don't keep that at the end of the year. We put it in different stabilizations or savings accounts. Like we put 100,000 in one stabilization, we put 2,200,000 in capital stabilization, we put so much in compensated absences and so much, but we put it all in there, but it's left over from different departments, and this was the biggest year ever that we had for free cash. So, you know, I always watch, I look to see where they come from when I'm doing the budgeting for the next year, and see if something, that's just me, so it's my little explanation. If I didn't get that right, Director Schindler, by all means, I'm sure that wasn't explained in your financial terms.
I would just, you know, I want to, please, I want to make sure that if we're...
Yes, that's, that's very, a very close synopsis. It also includes any receipts that are over what we estimate. So it's any leftover balances in the general fund go back into what's called undesigned along with any additional estimated receipts over what we've put in, onto our recap for estimates. So that's what makes up your free cash. Oh, I'm sorry.
You were just...
Too far.
Yes, not, you're correct.
Okay, sorry, it's getting late for me. I'll, I'll try, I'll try to keep going.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Counselor Disorgier.
Order number FY23-151. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council accepts the fiscal year budget process as established by the Community Preservation Committee and as attached. Majority vote required.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do you have an explanation or recommendation on this?
This received our recommendation, and I wanted to say that they did a fabulous job of outlining what this was supposed to be, and Travis Drury, who's, who's the chair of that committee, was really making sure that I followed this right along, that this came through in us accepting the process. Kudos to that committee, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's sort of outlined who it's supposed to go to. It has a map in black and white, but in some other book it was in color. It's very well done, and I think it's...
Yeah, this was a process in order to allocate the money and follow the procedure, so it has oversight, acceptance, and transparency, and each element was accepted. Now what we're doing is accepting the process. That's it. We're not accepting any money, we're just saying that we agree with the process. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Motion passes. Counselor Disorgier.
Order number FY23-129. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner, in order, Community Preservation Fund reserves, ordered that the city, Greenfield City Council reserve from Community Preservation in annual reserves or available funds. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community preservation projects and other expenses, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows. Reserve, $144,537.19 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund purposes. Fiscal year 2022 annual budgeted reserves. Reserve, $20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for open space. Reserve, $20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for historic resources. Reserve, $20,648.69 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community housing. Majority vote required.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation, explanation?
Recommendation is, was, that was a unanimous positive, and the explanation was, you know, as follows over several pages that I'm, I'm not going to...
You do not need...
It's sort of, you know, we established the law, and we're following the law that was set up by Mass. General Law.
Correct. Any questions or discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Order number...
Hold on, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
My bad. Order number FY23-111. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner, in order, ambulance, move that it be ordered the sum of $470,000 be appropriated to purchase an ambulance, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $470,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation, and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of these projects. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Forgji.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendations?
Okay, so this received a unanimous positive from the Capital Improvement Committee before us, and then Ways and Means gave, also gave this a unanimous positive.
Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. And just, this is a reminder to everybody, we are now into the capital budget, and these are all the items, 18 separate orders of the capital budget recommendations that Counselor Disorgier will be going through.
May I, I'm just going to say, I gave you the recommendation of the Capitol Committee. This is something that's in our policies at the end, that you should be aware of how the Capitol Committee voted, and so at the end of each order, you're going to get both of them. I also, I'm just going to take one second, please. This is from page 206. These are our policies on capital improvement, because we do have different ones to consider. I meant to say this at the beginning, I just have three sentences. The city will determine the least costly financing method for all new projects. The city will use intergovernment, intergovernment, intergovernmental assistance to finance only those capital improvements that are consistent with the capital improvements plan and priorities. The city will coordinate development of the capital improvement budget with development of the operating budget. I just wanted to read that aloud as the discussion came up. One, the left hand does affect sometimes what the right hand is doing. It's my opinion, that's not fact, but...
I just want to make sure that we realize we're on the capital budget.
Yes, we're on capital, but that is in our book on capital policies, I wanted to read that aloud.
Correct, perfect. I appreciate that. Let's move on, we've, we've gone through the ambulance now.
All right. Order number FY23-1112. The city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Reedagartner, in order for police station upgrades, move that it be ordered the sum of $575,000 be appropriated for upgrades to the police station, and to meet the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of $575,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for and contract for, accept and expend any federal and or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation, and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of these projects. Two-thirds votes required.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Recommendation from committees?
This received a, from the Capitol Committee, a unanimous negative recommendation, zero yeses and three nos. From the Ways and Means Committee, it was a unanimous negative.
And what was the consensus leading to your decision?
They hadn't been able to complete the work, and also there was confusion in the, in the presentation, there was some confusion in the presentation about what was actually going to be done with that. They were talking about requesting money for redoing the locker rooms, when that was what's supposed to be included in the first one. But overall, I think the intent of both committees was that they hadn't been able to complete any of the work. They had had some difficulty getting a contractor to do that, but we thought they had $904,000 and nothing really had been much accomplished, so it wasn't time to borrow more, I would say. I don't want to put words in everybody's mouth, but that seemed to be sort of the consensus on that.
I just want to point out one thing that you said right there, that this was a borrowing, not, it's not money that we're spending, that we have. We would have to borrow it to spend it, so it's not money we can move because we don't have it, we'd be borrowing it. And I'm just explaining that, so if people think we could, we'll move this money to somewhere else, this is a borrowing, not a, not a sum of money we're moving. Any other discussion? Counselor Lapinski.
So I, I share the concerns of the committee, that, basically, if I may elaborate on that a little bit, so last year, after great deliberation, we voted to give the police department a substantial amount of money, almost a million dollars, to perform upgrades on their police station. And I'm a citizen, I, I'm a homeowner, I use the police when necessary. Unfortunately, in the last couple of months, I've had more occasions to use them than I normally like to, and I think that they deserve... to. And I think that they deserve a quality building. But we already gave them a lot of money, and they haven't used it. And I have some serious questions about the intention behind these requests for money. And I don't think that the chief, who's ultimately the one responsible, either is using this or any funds appropriately or responsibly, or is capable of doing so. And so while I do agree with many of the public commenters and other counselors and people who've written into the newspaper and so forth, that our police department is probably too big and probably does too much, I'm going to be voting no in this case, simply because I don't trust our current police leadership to spend this money the way that they say they're going to. I think they're just fleecing us. So I'm not going to vote for any money for police station upgrades until they can show me that they know how to spend money.
Counselor Disorga, clarification. $900,000 from last year's capital budget that was given to the police station from, what happens to that $900,000?
That debt money did not disappear. It's still $904,000.
Was that a borrowing, or was that money made available?
It was part and part.
Okay, that's right.
Some of it came out of, I don't have that breakdown right in front of me. I don't remember it.
No, no, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just want...
Some of it came out of, some of it was borrowing, as I recall, and some of it came out of contract, I mean, capital stabilization.
So they still have $900,000 to begin this process?
Right.
And if they were to finish this process with the $900,000, then in the future, they could come back for the finalizing it with this?
Yes. And my hope would be that they would get a contractor, because there was some confusion in the deliberation. My hope would be, well, my thought would be, if this were my home, I would get a contractor and I would have that person look at the inside of my building, because there's two parts of the inside of the building that need attention. And then there's some water on the outside. Of course, you'd fix the water part first. That was going to be the least expensive part. I think that was going to be around $85,000 or a very small amount. And then there was two parts on the inside of the building. I would hope that they would, you would get a contractor and do the two parts of the inside of the building, and then there's something that they want to attach to the outside. That's my hope. It would make sense to me to get a contractor to look at two pieces inside of a building, get that done, and then come back for more money. And certainly, I toward it, toward it also. There's things that need to be done. And, you know, they had a, it was a, it was a tough year for them, too. So I can understand why those things didn't get done, but they're not. So I wouldn't, I couldn't advocate for more money. That's just personally.
Counselor Torrance?
I think I was just going to kind of, maybe not speak for others, but kind of clarify what we talked about, the, at Ways and Means, was essentially, out of the phases of development of a project, they haven't really even begun the first phase. Like, it's not like they're in design and they're waiting, you know, for bids, or they haven't, literally, they weren't showing us they did anything in a year. And so that was, I think, the sentiment that we pointed out kind of clearly at that meeting was, well, show us something this year, and then if you want to come back next year and get part two. But why would we just keep, especially with borrowing, like you said, why would we keep borrowing money for zero result? Like, zero.
Counselor Elmer?
I have a question about, can you explain why the Capital Improvement Committee gave a negative recommendation?
Both did. They agreed. There's three people on that. You get somebody from planning and construction. You get three people from various things. And they take a look at this, and they saw that nothing was done. And they had the same questions. They met with the, I don't know if it was the chief or the deputy chief, but they couldn't recommend more money because, well, if you haven't fixed the water thing first, there's really no sense doing other things. So that was why.
To follow up, I may have misunderstood, but I thought at your meeting, you said that they thought that these, this money should be coming from operating budget, not capital? I got that wrong. Okay. Take strike there.
Counselor, Counselor Forgy?
Thank you very much. So Counselor Elmer, I sat on the Capital Improvement Committee. There's three of us. There's a representative from the school department. There's a representative from council, which happens to be the Ways and Means Chair. And then the other representative was from the Planning and Construction Committee. I think it was unanimous. We all realized that what had been voted last year had not been touched. There had not been any upgraded plans. There had not been any attempts at all to move forward on the project. And it just, again, I will reiterate, whether the counselors have said, but on behalf of the Capital Improvement Committee, it made no sense to go ahead and give more authorization to borrow more money at some distant point with having nothing achieved so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Disorga, I just want one more point. The $900,000 we established is still available to them, but we don't borrow money till we need the money. We authorized the borrowing, but we didn't borrow half of that, and it's sitting somewhere. We only borrow it as needed. Is that correct, Director? Or, I just want to make sure people don't think we borrowed the money and then didn't use it. We authorized the borrowing, and they haven't used that as of now. Correct?
Yes, yes.
All right.
I think once you start it, you take out a, you know, a band, like a bond anticipation note, but that money is still there. It's not gone. It's all available for them. And once they get started, then they'll probably come back another time.
I have a tendency personally to agree with the committees in that if they have that $900,000 available, we're not denying them anything. Let's use that, and then, and then move forward. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I think your question, Dan, just answered a piece of my question, but now I have another question. It's municipal finance related. So if we allocate money to a department, then, and they don't use that money, how many years does that funding stay allocated to those departments?
Is this in capital? Are we asking capital specific?
I think it's a couple of years, but I'm not, no.
Director Schindler?
Director Schindler looks like she's going to, she's getting her exercise from the back of the room.
Counselor Forgy, may I know?
Okay.
I believe, I believe, I believe that that borrowing only stays open for a specific amount of years. I'm going to say, I'm going to guess, so three to five years. If it's not used at the end of that time, it has to be retired. I mean, the Department of Revenue won't let us sit on a whole bunch of authorized but unused borrowings. It won't happen.
Okay. That was my question, because I know that there's, like, rules with government funding for grants, that if you don't use it in a certain amount of time, you have to return it.
And our, our city clerk said the same thing, that they get reviewed periodically, and then there's an established way that they're denied if they aren't used in a, they have to be rescinded, or they have to be, yeah, rescinded, really.
And then my other question was, and I did watch, re-watch the meeting, but I agree the, the presentation was a little confusing. So was there a confirmation that work would be done in this fiscal year? The previous work that was supposed to happen, that that would start in this fiscal year?
I could not exactly say that, but they were, it sounded like people were going to try.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and I do believe that, I did speak to Lieutenant Dodge, who, he really had been reaching out and really trying to get in touch with the contractor, and he'd made several attempts. I can say that for sure. We had a great conversation on that.
All right. Any other discussion? Questions? Seeing none. All those roll call vote?
Clarification, Point of Water?
Yes.
Clarification, please, on what a positive and negative vote would mean.
Clerk?
A yes vote would appropriate the borrowing of $575,000, which requires two-thirds vote majority. So nine yes would be required to pass the order. A no vote would not allow the appropriation or the borrowing to take place.
Thank you.
Counselor Gold?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgy?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Torrance?
Nope.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. No.
It is defeated.
Counselor Disorga?
Upon, okay. Order number FY23-113. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Rida Gardner, an order, replacement of police cruisers. Move that be ordered, the sum of $186,238,000 be appropriated for the purchase of three police department vehicles. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of, to borrow the sum of $186,238,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal or state grants available for this project to be raised, to be used, to reduce the within appropriations. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of these projects. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Rickett?
Second, Forgy.
And that amount was $186,238, correct?
That's correct.
Recommendations?
So from the Capital Improvement Committee, that was a unanimous negative. And also from us, it was a unanimous negative. I do want to say that we recognized the need for the replacement schedule for police cruisers. I had wonderful talk with Deputy Chief Gordon, who sent me the replacement schedule. I know how many miles are on every car and what kind they are. And he was fabulous with that. But the fact of the matter is, we have been using a lease program since, like, 2008, and we have been following it. This is what other municipalities do. You'll notice later on, well, in the operating budget, my, Director Warner has, he's got a vehicle on, and it's a lease. The fire department, he was at the meetings. The leases are good. And you can kind of see the thing there. I think there were, his rationale was worrying about the operating budget. This has been in their operating budget. It was in their operating budget last year, $55,000, and was not cut. And they will be paying the lease payment for this in June for the last car. However, I do have a problem with this on, I just want to say this, on Munis, that line item just disappeared from Munis in the three-quarter report, along with that line item 5870, when we got our third quarter report on Munis. That line item, which was in the January 1st report, was there. It's totally disappeared on our three-quarters report, along with the debt. So I just wanted to ask a question about that. But that was how that went.
Okay. Counselor Forgy, did you have?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I was one of the members of the Ways and Means that voted negative on this item because of the concern of borrowing. However, I have thought about it long and, for a long time, after the meeting, and I am going to advocate this evening for the borrowing to go through. I am not personally willing, and on behalf of my constituents, I'm not willing to make a decision on whether it should be a borrowing or whether it should be an appropriation. I don't really feel that that is within my purview. I think that that is something that is presented forward for us to think about, but it is not, in my opinion, the only thing we need to think about. I would like to see those three vehicles fully funded. I don't think there's anything wrong with the borrowing. It is a means to an end. Maybe next year is the year we go back to appropriation, since we, we're looking for money right now in appropriations for across-the-board budgetary concerns. And I really don't want police department officials and officers to not have the equipment that they need, that is necessary for them to do their jobs on a daily basis. I will not impede that process. So therefore, I will be voting in favor of this borrowing, and I thank you for the time.
I'm going to recognize Counsel Lapinski, but Counsel Disorga, do you have something from Ways and Means or committee?
No. You know, Counsel Lapinski had his hand up first.
Counsel Lapinski?
So I want to address the point that Counsel Forgy just brought up. Yes, we need our department to have the proper equipment. At this time, I'm not going to bring up the questions that I often have about the ways in which they use their equipment. I think that's probably better discussed next month. I want to talk about why they're borrowing, why they're buying instead of leasing, and whether or not that's in our purview. Normally, I would agree with you that this is not in our purview. I'm going to say why it is this month. And I'm also going to say, by the way, I attended both Ways and Means meetings in full, in person, where this was discussed. And Chief Hague attended the one in which this conversation took place, from his planning-to-be sick room. And he said explicitly, out loud, on camera, you can go and look this up, that he's asking to buy the vehicles? Because even though he had money in his budget last year for leases, he chose not to use it because we cut his budget. We didn't cut it by a lot. We just cut it back to what it had been the year before, when he was, oh, leasing vehicles. And so really, this is just a way to give us a big middle finger and take more money from Greenfield. Even if we made the same $400,000 cut this year that we did last year, and even if we made many more cuts than that, which I'm not advocating for in this instance, they would still have enough money to lease these in the operating budget. There is no shortage of money to do this. This is just trying to get around the cuts, even though they've already applied for all kinds of grants and ARPA money, and they've already made up for the cuts. So really, this is just, again, the police chief fleecing Greenfield. I'm tired of this guy. We got to deal with this. But for now, we definitely have to vote no on this, and they'll still have the cruisers that, that they need, Counsel Forgy. I promise you, they will. They will not let their officers go without, and they've got plenty of money to do it.
I disagree respectfully.
Counsel Disorga?
Two things. In the next order, there's a fiscal order following this one, one that was coming out of capital stabilization, where the Ways and Means Committee gave this a positive, a positive recommendation, because it was coming out of money that we had. We are, many of the borrowings that we have now are actually outside the debt limit. We heard various... We heard various reports, you know, how long a cruiser would last, three years, maybe five, maybe if they took care of it a little longer. But there are guidelines for the borrowing and how long you borrow for something that has a lifespan of four to five years. It does, in my mind, does not fit in. It is not fiscally responsible for the city. I agree absolutely with Counselor Forgé that they need to have safe cars. They're getting one. I talked with Deputy Chief Gordon, and I feel confident that there was a way for them to manage another lease out of the proposed expenditures in their fiscal year '24 budget. So this is not like we're keeping that from them, that item from them. But leasing has been something that they were doing. And if you actually read the explanation part of, I don't know if you all read the explanation for this, so I'm not going to read it out loud again, but the explanation part of this is like, yikes. So there is one that's coming. I want all our officers to be in cars that are safe. And this, the leasing program has been working, and it's more fiscally responsible.
Counselor Disorga, I need a point of clarification, because this is your forte and not mine. We were told earlier tonight that there was like $17,000 left, you know, from the mayor at some point in time, or something close to that, some double-digit teens of thousands left. Would, are, so the thought here is if they have to buy 186,000 dollars worth of vehicles, are we suggesting that that 186,000 dollars is in their current operating budget?
Nope.
Or we would have to increase their operating budget? That's, if we don't have 186,000 dollars, when we borrow 186,000 dollars, we're not moving money, we're borrowing money. But if we're paying 186,000 dollars out of an operating budget, don't we have to have that money? I'm trying to get the...
Okay. So let me tell you, I spent so much time researching this that the internet now thinks I'm a fleet manager. I get hundreds of emails a day. This is the time that I've spent on that. I got the leases from Laura Phelps. No word of a lie, they think I'm a fleet manager. I read through the lease agreements. When we buy, when we go to rent, I mean, lease three vehicles, you say, I'd like three. And then the first year, you pay for the first one, okay? Then the second year, you pay for the second one. And then the third year, you pay for the third one. So you certainly don't have to have 186,000 in your operating budget. Mind you, that operating, the expenditure line from last year was about 275,000. It's mid-April. There's still money left in it, plenty of money to pay the lease payment. Although, I might point out, again, that that line item disappeared from Munis, which I find concerning. I just want to say that, just want to emphasize that. You know, where line item 5870 disappeared from is a concern to me, along with the fact that we've got a report without that and without the debt. That is very concerning, and I wanted to make a point of it. But there was plenty of money to pay for the last lease this year, and in their expenditure line, which made me know that there was going to be money to pay for one next year. Additionally, we're buying one outright, and...
So this wouldn't increase, so by doing this, it would increase our expenses at all?
No. He, and I talked to Deputy Chief Gordon about that. I said, you know, I think maybe you could be able to find that, because I looked at the expenditures for this item, and, you know, that's up to him. He didn't have a line item in there for it, but there you go.
Okay. Counselor Bullock?
I didn't hear during the meeting, was there a number on how many officers we have versus how many vehicles we currently have?
Yes, I asked that also. That's a very, that's, that's a golden number to find. No police department on earth actually lets you know exactly how many you need per person. That's what I found. However, I found that the city of Montague has like 12 or 13. They had, that's where I started. They gave all their, you know, VIN numbers and everything. And they'd say whether it was good or bad, or how many years. But I thought, we legitimately, the ones that they wanted to replace have so many miles on it. But I couldn't find out exactly how many you needed. I learned, listening to the chief and the police chief, that you have to give cars a rest, just like we need a rest at night. That's how I looked at it. You know, you don't run a car for 24 hours, and I thought, that makes sense. Hopefully, we won't be here for 24 hours either. And, you know, and then I learned, I asked, how many people take them home? There's, you know, two people, there's two K9 cars that go home, there's the deputy chief and the chief take one home.
But was there a number?
Yeah, no, there's no number.
What I didn't hear in the meeting...
Okay, sorry, Penny, I'm so sorry, I wasn't quick enough.
What I didn't hear in the meeting was how many police officers we have and how many cars we have that are operational.
So you're asking simple ratio? How many police officers, how many cars in Greenfield?
Yeah, yeah, for Greenfield. Did that get answered in that meeting? I just didn't hear it if it did.
Anyone from Ways and Means recall that answer? Okay. I don't think we have that answer, but we can look into that. Is there anyone that, Counselor Bullock, I mean Counselor Gullup, sorry.
I voted no on this, and I'm actually thinking that I'm going to need to abstain. I appreciate your question, Counselor Gwin, about the money that's needed for the schools. And I don't want to move to table this, because I don't want us to have to talk about this again. I want to say why I voted no on this. On pages 206 and 207, it writes, the city will determine, two things. One, the city will determine the least costly financing method for all new projects. The amount of interest that we need to pay when we borrow is substantial. And this borrowing does not seem to me to be the least costly method. That's one reason I voted against this. The second reason is that we had a long conversation about the length that a vehicle lasts. And really, they're supposed to last about three years. Sounds like they're doing a good job of extending them five years. Page 207 says that capital projects should have a useful life of at least five years, which is more than these police cruisers have. So I do not believe the borrowing is the best funding mechanism for these cruisers. That said, oh, I just lost it. But here, it's saying, and I don't want to contradict something you're saying, Counselor Disorga, I know the research you've put into this, but I am seeing a zero next to police cruisers in the operating budget. And that really concerns me, and I would want to do my own research on that to ensure that an additional 186,000 dollars would not need to be allocated from the operating budget, which could, my number, priority is funding the schools, so that, that concerns me. And I don't want us to have to have this conversation again, so I'm reluctant to table. But that is why I believe I'm going to need to abstain.
Is there anyone that hasn't spoken on this that would like to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would, I can add some, or shed some light. The number of officers that Greenfield has is 27, with three special officers.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I don't know how many, I don't know how many vehicles that is, but that's how many officers there are.
Counselor Disorga, did you have something to wrap this up with?
Yes, I had, I had the answer. They had 24 cars, okay? 24 cars. One of them is inoperable. And I can give you all the statistics on all the other ones if you want.
You can get her that if she wants that later, but...
Sorry, I have one more thing. So we have 27 officers, 24 cars, but we don't have all officers on duty at the same time. And there was like some percentage of cars that need to rest. So you're switching out cars for different staffing? Okay, this, okay, that's, sorry, I was thinking a lot, but there was no rationale around that that was explained? No? Okay.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I learned too is that they switch cars. Like, some of the cruisers belong to one officer, but after like six months or a certain amount of time, then they're no longer on that one. So after the last CRE meeting, the one thing that I heard from the public is that they really wanted to have cruisers out and about. They think that would be the best deterrent of crime, is to be visible. So I'm going to just be voting yes on this. It's just a resource that we need.
Anyone that hasn't spoken yet to this? Counselor Lapinski, did you have something? And then, because we're, I've recognized everyone at least twice, and then it's, then it's over.
This is actually only my second time, and it's just one simple thing. Yep. I just want to add that while it is true that, I think it's about half of the Greenfield Police Department is allowed to take their vehicles home, it is also the case that the chief, and I think possibly also the deputy chief, are allowed to take their vehicles on vacation, to the mall, or wherever they want. And that affects wear and tear as well.
All right, moving forward, anything else? All right.
Have a roll call vote, please.
A roll call vote, and remind us, we are voting for authorizing the borrowing of 186,238 dollars.
Counselor Gullup?
Abstain.
Counselor Disorga?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Vice President Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
No.
Does the president wish to vote? So the motion is defeated by majority.
Counselor Disorga, I just want to remind everybody, it's 10:41, and we're on four of 18.
Yes.
Just giving you all a place marker.
Yeah, point of order, I believe it's time for our scheduled break.
Yeah, we are in time for a scheduled break, and I believe it's right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
A five-minute recess. Please, let's try to get back here on the floor as soon as we can. I will call this meeting back to order at 10:48 PM. I want to just clarify, I'm going to invoke a rule of procedure, just so we're there. We will recognize everyone once. I will then recognize you for a second-time follow-up, and that is it. So I ask you to choose what you want to talk about, when we do it first time, and try to stay on topic. We just have a lot to go through at this time. And that's not me doing anything than doing our procedure. That's our rule of procedure, okay? Counselor Disorga?
Order Number FY23-114. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, an order for replacement of police cruisers. Move that it be ordered, the sum of 62,180 dollars be appropriated for a police department vehicle. And to meet said appropriation, transfer 62,182 dollars, 180 dollars from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization. Two-thirds vote required.
I need a second on the motion.
Second?
Motion's been made, and seconded recommendations.
This got a unanimous negative from Capital Improvement, and a unanimous positive from Ways and Means. It was kind of billed as a truck, sort of a pickup, pickup truck. But they, but they said that they, this actually could absolutely be used as a cruiser. And we voted in favor of it, because the money is there, it's in capital stabilization, it's not a borrowing, and they needed a car. And actually, I could, I think, once this order's in, they could buy what they wanted.
All right, thank you. We will not have an explanation from the Capital Committee, as Counselor Forgé has left the meeting at 10:45 PM for the evening. So let's continue any discussion on this, seeing none. Counselor Lapinski?
Yeah, so I just want to say that while it's true that this is money that we have, it's also true that the police department had this money last year, and they chose not to use it for this because they wanted to get us back for the budget cuts. And so now they're coming and asking for extra money in addition to their increase in the operating budget. So it's basically the same thing as before. They're trying to get around the cuts that we made, and we shouldn't let them do it. I'm a no.
Any other discussion? Counselor Toronzo, and then Counselor Gilmore.
I'm sorry, I just have to 100% completely disagree with that last statement. It is, not everything is trying to get around what was done last year. There are certain things that are needed, and this is, this is a capital request for a, for a truck, which is also, in addition to helping the police department, will help the city in other ways in assisting other departments. Not everything's nefarious, and I just, I'm sorry, I take a bit of offense to every comment that comes out that has to do with that perpetually, so that's it.
Counselor Gilmore?
I have a couple of questions, so since, I don't want to be recognized over and over again, if I could. I want to know, because this one was the pickup truck, which is different. I wanted to know why this isn't a lease? I know he had explained that it wasn't available in previous years. I remember that part from your meeting. And also, Counselor Gullup just brought up the part about, it should have to last five years or longer. And I wonder why, what would be the rationale that a pickup truck would last five years or longer, whereas a cruiser would not?
You're answering questions, not asking.
Okay. So when you're borrowing money, the borrowing part is for a certain amount. This is a capital, this is coming from capital stabilization. So it's not a borrowing. It's money that we have.
So if it's coming from stabilization, that's the reason why it doesn't have to last five years? Is that...
You're not talking about the borrowing, you're talking about the vehicle lasting five years? I, I'm just trying to...
I'm sorry, I'm tired, and maybe I didn't phrase that well.
No, I think we got, we crossed over the borrowing allocation lasting five years, or the vehicle lasting five years, and they're borrowing...
So the asset is supposed to last for five or more years, otherwise it's not considered capital. And I didn't consider that until Counselor Gullup mentioned that about the vehicles in the previous motion. So I don't understand why a pickup truck would last five or more years, whereas it's not expected that a cruiser would. That was one of my questions. The other question...
Let's get an answer to that, and then I'll go back to you. We can, Counselor Toronzo?
I guess I don't want to overextend, I guess, my presumption. But this would be used as a cruiser, but not in the same capacity as a cruiser, as often in that capacity. More like a supplementary vehicle. And probably wouldn't be beat on as hard. So it would have presumably a longer lifespan than a normal cruiser would. That's, at least was my understanding of, does that resonate as to what?
Thank you. And then, the reason why the pickup truck can't be a lease? I know the body shape wasn't available in previous years, but now that it is, I don't understand why it can't be leased instead of purchased.
Was there an explanation to that?
We actually did not ask that, but that would not be in their operating budget. And I actually, they needed a vehicle. They could take the 62,000 and decide not to buy the pickup truck, they could buy a cruiser. But I think they needed a vehicle. I think that was a reasonable request. But why it wasn't a lease, I actually don't know. They're not here.
They're not here to answer that for, so, okay, any other questions? Counselor Bottomley?
I did want to say, in this, I did mention that I felt, for me personally, that this was an extra vehicle. I felt like the cruisers were needed, but this one, the pickup truck, to me, felt more like a want than a need. That's just my impression of it.
Anyone that hasn't spoken yet, Counselor Elmer?
Can you answer why the Capital Improvement Committee gave it a negative recommendation?
If you can try to give it a, like I said, if you're...
It was because of what the chief actually said in his description of the vehicle, the fire department had... Am I saying this correctly? We have a member of the Capital Committee sitting here, but I think it was that the fire department had one. Okay? And it would be nice to have one. However, that's the reason that the Capital Committee said that. In our meeting, he did say that he could use this as a cruiser, and I thought, well, they need a cruiser.
So the rationale changed.
That was the rationale for them.
So it was a change of rationale. Okay. I think Chair Peretti is probably not going to be happy now that I know she's on that committee and sitting 10 feet to my left arm. Oh yeah, I'm just saying, I just want to, with both of you, with both of you here, please, if there's an... But if there's explanation with the two of you there, please, let me know, because that's, I'd rather you answer the questions than us guess. Counselor Toronzo?
I just wanted to add too, if it wasn't watched, part of the discussion, I think that differed. What I was saying was why this would be used as a utility, could be used as a cruiser, but was described as more of a utility vehicle, and I understand the want versus need. I actually think this is a smart investment because of the extra use that it has without having, it was explained to us at the meeting, whether it helps out the DPW, it helps out the fire department. As a supplementary vehicle that, for instance, the example we're given, if we need to put up stanchions, or barricades, because the road's closed, the process now is tedious, time-consuming, wasteful, because we have one truck that'll do it, the fire truck, or the DPW has to get called out in the middle of the night to bring the truck, to bring the road closure things, where it could easily, more easily be done, and efficiently, in my mind, be done, where we already have the barricades, they could be loaded into the cruiser that's going to respond to it, well, the cruiser truck. It's not a real truck, the cruiser truck, and and brought to the place. So it would save us hassle and time in response to it, and I think that was part of the reason why it was more appropriate to ask for a truck, and the other utility could function as well.
Counselor Bullock, you haven't spoken to this yet?
I haven't. You know, during the meeting, I was sold on this, like you were saying, Counselor Toronzo, like, this makes sense. This is utilitarian, it has a purpose. As I'm sitting here, I'm once again in this place where I'm like, why are we buying a more expensive police vehicle that needs to be outfitted in a special way and costs more money, instead of buying a regular truck for the DPW to go do what they need to do at a lesser cost? It's like that piece where we've been talking about in prior meetings, and offline, and trying to talk with the mayor, and about like, when we expect the police to do every single function of public safety that's not within their purview, they get all the money. And so we're in a year where we now have to cut budgets, and I'm really sitting here feeling like we're tasked with doing the mayor's job. Like, we're having to make these decisions in this meeting to pull and pull and pull to find $1.5 million, and this is not borrowing, and so this is one of those times where it's like we're getting into money that we're not going to be borrowing, that we could reallocate, so when I watched the movie, when I watched the meeting, I was in favor of this one, and as I'm sitting here, I'm like, this is another time where we're spending more money on policing and police infrastructure, and we could be spending less within other departments, and allocating towards public safety that's not policing within our city. So I'm going to vote no.
I have no idea what I'm talking about, Counselor Bullock, but one thing that I believe could be a situation is Counselor Toronzo touched on this, which is staffing. You know, if we have to call the DPW out to bring barricades that we could bring with the police truck, are we bringing in overtime from another department when we have someone responding?
Yeah, but who's more expensive than a police officer?
But they're already there, because they're responding to the accident, or they're responding to the what-have-you, and they're going to the scene.
I mean, it's getting into the nitty-gritty, but I'd like to see, like, who's more expensive, a DPW worker on overtime, or a police officer?
But I believe the thing that I'm saying is a police officer's already got to be there, because it's an accident, or it's a it's a police situation where they're putting up barricades, they're there. DPW, we probably don't want there, but we'd have to call them in to bring barricades. That's where I'm saying it's staffing, and that would be my only thought, that this would alleviate if the police bring their own barricades, so we don't have to involve a separate staff. And also, we have to keep in mind, this allocation, they could buy whatever vehicle they choose. Counselor Elmer? No, I'm just seeing who has spoken. Is anyone not spoken to this the first time? Counselor Golub?
So I'm going to be completely honest, which I try to do, but this feels uncomfortable to say, but I want to be honest about this one. I take seriously comments like Jesus is there, don't retaliate against, don't make this a political thing, and honestly, that's part of why I didn't question this one that much, because I do believe that the police are that we might have to make some cuts that I don't want to have to make. I don't want to be retaliatory against the police. I don't want, I don't want to cut every single item that they have, like, I don't want to have to do that, and so, okay, give them a truck. Honestly, that was part of my thinking. And it's right that it was presented as more of a want than a need, and if the number-one priority right now is funding the schools, and I'm going to, and I've changed, I'm going to say in a couple of orders, that I'm changing from a yes to a no on another order. I don't want, I don't want to vote no on this, but I think I'm going to.
Has anyone not spoken to this that would like to speak to this? All right, Counselor Lapinski, your final response?
So during the Ways and Means meeting, it was discussed, as has been brought up, about the issue of needing to do those barricades and so forth. Specifically, one of the chiefs brought up, during the storm, it was stated, quote, "DPW was chasing us down to block off roads." We have the, we don't have the police here, because they didn't have the decency to send us a representative. We do have Marla Warner, who's dedicated enough to sit through every city council meeting. I would like to ask him if that's true.
Director? I wouldn't want to find out if it's true. I think I would like to see that relationship explained.
I think the scenario that was said was the, I think, the latest storm we had. We had heavy wet snow, we had ice, we were short-staffed. We had every person available out there plowing the roads, keeping them clear, and during that event, trees started coming down, so roads had to be closed. We did free up one plow driver, the statement that we did chase them, they were blocking roads with cruisers, we caught up with them eventually. I think in a more formal statement towards utilizing the pickup truck, when we respond to big events, a lot of trees come down, we got multiple road closures. We load 30, 35 signs on our truck, and we go out, and we start closing. I have not had any discussion on this truck, but I think the intent is to probably close the road and make it safe until we can respond, if we're needed to close other roads. So a much larger event, we're going to be needed, multiple pickup truck loads of signs. We have them at the DPW. I think the intent, I'm guessing, is that they can secure a road safely, so folks don't go down that road if there's wires down, poles, a pole or something like that. Would be my guess.
And my other question related to this, and this isn't for you, it's just for, does anyone know whether the police department have their own barricades, or if they'd have to borrow from DPW? And then how would that logistically work? Like, would it make sense for them to have a truck if they don't have their own barricades?
At Capital Improvements, I believe it was explained to us that they have one of those trailers with the cones and the construction barrels and the signage that they can tow around, but they don't easily have a way to tow it. Is that your, that's how it was explained to us, is that, you've seen them, like, it was out by Giorgio's Pizza all summer that says, there's a drought, don't water your lawn, but it has all the barrels and stuff on it. That's what they want to tow around. That's how it was explained at Capital Improvements, is they have those, and they don't have a way to tow them.
Thank you. Moving forward, Counselor Bullock, did you have something? Okay, all right. Counselor Golub, did you have a second and final comment on this one?
I was trying to point out, I saw Director Warner had his hand up, and I was pointing that out, but I do have a follow-up question. Did you, was there, before I go, was there something that you were trying to say?
Yeah, I was just going to give information on, we have two of these trailers we received through Grant, they're housed at the DPW. I have not discussed with, the three departments use them. We generally towed it around. The fire department has a pickup truck, they need it, they'll tow it around. We put it out, we'll be flushing hydrants in a couple of weeks, we'll be putting them both out from the DPW yard, so I think the course of action with them using the trailer, it's for all three departments. That was made clear when we received them through Grant.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer?
I just want to point out, one thing I learned is that it's not just a matter of buying a pickup truck, it has to be fitted with all this police equipment, the radios, the barrier, and so forth. If they need a pickup truck, they can buy a cheap pickup truck, they don't need a fancy one. It does feel like a little, you know, not needed, more like they want it, so I'm going to be a no on this.
All right, any other questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
Are you good? All right.
I am.
All right. I'm seeing none. All those roll call? Explain quickly what we're voting for?
The motion on the floor is to approve $62,180 for a police department vehicle. A yes vote would approve the funds from capital stabilization, a no vote would not.
Two-thirds required?
Counselor Golub?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
Come back to me, please.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. Yes.
This motion is defeated by majority.
Counselor Disorder?
Fiscal Order 23-115, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, an order for sidewalk replacement, move that it be ordered that the sum of $200,000 be appropriated for the sidewalk replacement program, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $200,000 from 8402 Capital Stabilization. Two-thirds vote required, nine.
Rationale.
Okay, this was a unanimous positive from Capital Improvement Committee, and unanimous positive from Ways and Means, the feeling that we couldn't put enough money into our sidewalks.
Second, Mayo.
Discussion. Anybody want to know if we need sidewalks, or we want sidewalks? Just any clarification? All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion carries. Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-116, an order for highway fund. The sum of $200,000 be appropriated for the highway fund, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $200,000 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization. Two-thirds vote required, nine.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded rationale?
Capital Improvement Committee forwarded unanimous positive recommendation, and Ways and Means was a unanimous positive recommendation, like keeping up with our sidewalks, you do the same thing with your streets.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion carries. Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-117, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, an order to purchase a large area mower. Move that it be ordered that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated to purchase a large area mower, and to meet the appropriation, transfer $150,000 from 8402 Capital Stabilization. Two-thirds vote required, nine.
Second.
Report?
Yes, please.
This was a unanimous positive from the Capital Improvement Committee, and also unanimous positive from Ways and Means. I don't know much about cars and trucks, but I saw all the bad things that were in this, and I'm not going to go into them, but it was in bad shape, and it was obvious that they needed another one.
Is there a reason that we're not leasing this?
I don't know that.
Just curious.
I don't, I think...
22 years, okay. It's an outright purchase. Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, sorry, Doug. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Order number FY23-118, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, an order for the Legion Ave parking lot resurfacing, move that it be ordered that the sum of $55,000 be appropriated for the mill and overlay paving of Legion Ave parking lot, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $55,000 from free cash. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Capital Improvement Committee was unanimous, three zero. Ways and Means was a mixed negative, three no, and two yes. The funding source was changed. When the Capital Committee voted on it, it was supposed to come out of capital stabilization, and then it was coming out of free cash, that was changed, and also that day, we, or the day before, we had gotten the operating budget out. This parking lot needs, does need to be done, but the free cash, I'm just going to speak for the majority. We were thinking about what the free cash could be used for. I will be a no on this, despite the fact that the parking lot needs paving, because we're going to need that free cash to fund the schools, and I would encourage my fellow counselors to... to vote a no and some other time we can take it out of a.
Point of clarification, we cannot change funding source.
Absolutely not.
I'm just, I just want the floor to be aware. I'm, I'm gonna, um, ask a hypothetical to our Capitol Committee, um, obviously they said they changed the funding source after your vote, that it was gonna come out of stabilization and now it's coming out of free cash. Would that have, you know, it's hard for you to, to look into your crystal ball, but would that have changed your thought on something like that, would, would where that money was coming from had, not you personally, Jean, any opinion on that? I'm just, I'm just trying to look at this from, if that's a reason that we should really be concerned with. Alright, um, Counselor Ricketts.
Yes, I'm definitely a yes on this, I'm just so tired of watching things deteriorate, let's just get this fixed and stop kicking this can down the road, so, this is a yes for me.
Counselor Toranzo.
Um, I'm gonna take this minute just to tip my hand on, um, kind of a plan, uh, that's gonna involve four orders coming forward, um, this order, um, order sixteen, well, on the Roman numeral sixteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, um, so, yes, the split was on the funding source, and I agree wholeheartedly with what, uh, Counselor Disorder's saying on this, and to offer, um, and maybe speed up the process, maybe, um, I, I would vote no on this, for the exact reason that we would free up some free cash, um, and also on the roof over the police station, um, we can, we'll find out later, spoiler alert, um, that the eighty grand that was in free cash that was going to go to the bocce courts is no longer needed, and we put that as in a no. Um, so that right there becomes, um, one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars immediately, that's freed up in free cash, and I would ask that, in addition to the hundred-thousand-dollar contract stabilization that Jenny pointed out earlier, that still might be available, along with this, um, uh, one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, we, we would now have two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars immediately possibly available with a financial order to go towards the, the money that we all know needs to go to the schools. That being said, this project, as well as the roof over the back stairwell of the police station, I would also put out the request that it come back to us in a financial order for utilizing capital stabilization, um, and that could be funded, um, I, I, I don't know where that vote will go, but, um, I, I personally think that the capital stabilization request for, um, the wayfinding map development is a little excessive for this year, and whether we reduced it wholly or at least down to a hundred thousand, um, that would cover the eighty-five thousand, which would cover both of these, this project for the Legion Avenue lot and the roof over the back stairwell, that eighty-five thousand, um, so I just think there's other ways that we could fund that, and we have, as was pointed out earlier, a lot of money in capital stabilization, and I don't think that the eighty-five, well, it would still be, it wouldn't actually be moving at all, it would just be lowering, the capital stabilization money wouldn't be changing at all, it would just be essentially moving it from some of it going to the wayfinding map development, um, to fund these other two projects, if that makes sense to everybody, if, how I just laid that out. It might've been more confusing than I wanted it to be. I mean, obviously, all of these, we're not, we can't make the money go there, but this would be, this was kind of my thought on how we could have our cake and eat it too, as long as we get a little bit of handwashing from the other branch of government via, um, a financial order next month, and I think it could at least close the gap as quick, well, one quick way of closing part of the gap, so, that was where I came up.
I appreciate, I was just verifying with the clerk to make sure that suggestions are following procedure, and so far, we're, we're okay, 'cause we're, we cannot suggest funds, you know, we can't vote to change funding sources, that's not our, but it's a, it's a thought.
I was suggesting the vote to happen with the strong urgency towards the executive branch to bring us up.
Cause the free cash can go to the schools, the capital stabilization cannot.
Right.
Under any circumstance, it's just, unless it was a school capital project.
Right.
So, um, just making sure we're following the procedure. Counselor Gilmore?
Um, I, I like the plan that Counselor Toranzo just laid out, if I'm following him in my half-awake state right now, um, and the mayor did say to us during her remarks that she was looking for suggestions and that she wanted to work with us, so I think that this is a really great way, we're not going to say, oh, we're going to amend this and substitute that language like we would in ordinance, um, but this is us, us doing, this is us doing our part.
Yeah, y- you're making a good point, Counselor Gilmore, and that's cause this is what Clerk Scott and I were just talking about, I think we would have to draft this recommendation, yet, you know, someone would have to draft with the idea, because the mayor did ask us for ideas if we could find money, she, she said that to us tonight, that opens the door, uh, for us to come up with an idea, this, this is an idea. On the other hand, realize that we can make recommendations, she can do what she wants, I mean, as far as that goes, there's no telling, that's not in our purview. Um, we can deny the money, but we, doesn't mean she'll send it back in a new financial order, does not mean that, so we have to, just have to be able to understand, can we live with the repercussions if it doesn't come back in the way that you hope it does? Hope is good, but it doesn't mean it's gonna come back that way. So, the parking lot, I don't think, if I asked anyone here, does that parking lot need to be done, I don't, I don't think any of us would debate that that parking lot needs to be done. We're hoping that it could come back in a different form, but there's no guarantee on either side of that, and I just want people to be aware, when we make these thoughts, we're micromanaging the executive side, and it's that, that's what we get to do with our money, that is what we get to do with money, that's the power given to us, but realize, they don't have to follow our recommendation. Counselor Goleb.
So, I'll say that, and I would give my word, that if the, we, if the mayor next month comes back with an order for appropriating that, the one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars that is coming from free cash today, she came back with an order for that for the schools, and an order for capital stabilization to go to the parking lot and the roof over the stairs, I would vote for both of those, absolutely, um, and I will share, once we get to the wayfinding, I appreciate the recognition that the wayfinding is, is too much, and my heart really hurts with this one, I am going to be a no, a solid no on this one currently, and so that, it feels like a separate conversation for me.
Point of clarification, first reading, public hearing, second reading, vote, that's what has to happen when that order comes back, so it can't come back next month and we vote on it, can't happen that way, first reading.
I believe it can, if there's, there's a different process that can be made if there's an urgency to it.
I, I, not in a financial order, so, I'm just saying that, it can come back, but it won't come back next month, first reading will come back next month, and then we would be able to do that, correct, Counselor Disorder?
I'm the law on that, I'm, I'm not quite sure on the free cash one, but I think that's, anything that we cut from something, we can appropriate and add to the schools, the free cash if it's there, I'm not sure if we have the ability to.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about this coming back with a different funding source, has to go through the whole process, it can't jump ahead.
Oh, yes, that will be, that'd be a couple months to download.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it won't, we can't vote on this next month, it has to go through that full process, again, I don't want, you know, if, if.
We got it, we got it.
Alright, there was another piece of that, that, that we, we jumped on, oh, do not combine these in discussion going forward, we are talking about sixty, fifty-five thousand dollars, we're not talking about two-hundred thousand or anything, we're talking about fifty-five thousand, one at a time, just 'cause it gets confusing and legality gets challenged to what we're talking about. Counselor Lapinski.
Call the question.
Does someone want to second that?
Second, yeah. Just on the.
Motion's been made in second, need to call the question, roll call, vote.
I know, makes it longer.
This is to call the question, that's.
Don't do roll calls. Counselor Goleb?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
Roll call, to call the vote.
To call the question.
Call the question.
Yes, yes, yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion pass, the motion passes by majority.
Alright, we're called a question, question's been called, now, we're voting on the appropriation for fifty-five thousand from free cash for the overlay parking of Legion Avenue parking lot. Now we want a roll call vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Did you say Goleb? That's late.
Yes.
I'm a no.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion is defeated by majority.
Order number FY-twenty-three dash one-one-nine, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weedigardner, an order for a road treatment truck, move that it be ordered that the sum of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand be appropriated to purchase a road treatment truck and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-four or any other enabling statute, and the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and or state grant available for this project to be used to reduce the, with inappropriation, and further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of these projects. Two-thirds vote required, nine.
Second, Ricketts.
Uh, this was a unanimous positive from Capital Improvement Committee and unanimous positive from Ways and Means, thought the, the, the other one was bad, this one was worse, looked like it was hanging together by threads, and this need, this was one that was really needed.
In all honesty, um, the purchasing of these vehicles is really our only option when they're these specialty vehicles, there's no other way to fund them, correct? I, I just, I don't wanna have different standards for different departments where we ask about leasing on one and not on the other, I, I truly believe these specialty vehicles are not able to be leased in, in a traditional way, okay. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, passes, Counselor?
Order, order, order number FY-twenty-three dash one-two-zero, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weedigardner, in order to replace the membrane roof at the old library, move that it be ordered the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars be appropriated to replace the membrane roof at the old library and to meet said appropriation transfer one-hundred-and-sixty thousand from Fund eight-four-zero-two capital stabilization. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Um, this had a, um, the Capital Improvement Committee was a unanimous negative, and Ways and Means was a unanimous negative as well. Um, the issue wasn't whether or not the, the roof does have leaking, but, um, the, the financial order for this and for next year on this building were gonna be astronomical, and the message to the mayor was, um, by everybody, was time to sell the building because it was just gonna cost an astronomical amount of money to fix.
It's better to give it away than keep spending money. Um, any discussion, Counselor Lapinski?
Um, yeah, so my, my input on this is, I'm in agreement that we should vote no for the reason that the city should not retain the building, and I just wanna say that, uh, the various departments currently housed at the Sanderson Street Building, there has been a proposal to move them to the old library, and I think that's part of the reason that this is coming forward, and I think that that would be a lousy location for them, and I don't think those departments would be happy or comfortable there, so, um, to stick up for those departments who do some of the greatest work in our city, I'm gonna say that not only should we not fund this, we also shouldn't use it for that purpose or for any other purpose, and the city should get rid of it.
Anyone else have any questions on this? Counselor Disorder, did it come up, um, that the damage that the leaking roof could do, I, both committees saying negative stands very high on my thought, but with the damage, I mean, I've lived through buildings getting damaged in this community by water, and it cost us twenty million dollars, so, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, are we gonna have a building that's worthless because we let it go, deferring the maintenance?
Um, we all agree that it was important not to defer maintenance, it's on the back part of the building, which is a good thing, and also, the other good thing was, after we voted no in subcommittee, an RFP went out.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other discussion on this? Seeing none.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, we, uh, I also belong to the Historical Commission, uh, on the Green, or Greenfield, and we are very much interested in, in preservation or, or, uh, keeping the building alive so that, uh, we may be able to use it at some function, not the, um, there's been some talk about a, a museum, um, I'm not sure, you know, how far down the line that is, but there was, uh, uh, some real discussion about, uh, keeping, keeping the building, uh, uh, in, in good shape so that we could sell it, um, or, or, or use it for something else if we couldn't sell it. That's just my, my, uh, my, um, my little spiel for, uh, the Historical Society in Greenfield.
Counselor Mayo, so what, based on your Historical Commission membership, um, will you be voting in favor of spending one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars on this project?
Um, I think I'd have to abstain, um, just because of my involvement is of the, from the Historical Society, but, um, you know, being a keen historical person and, and knowing its value and, and how long it's, uh, uh, been beneficial to the town, um, it's, uh, before it was demolished, it would have to be, uh, the, the Historical Society would have to be, uh, notified before it was demolished so that we could go in and, um, take any, um, um, historical, uh, article or, or like a piece of beam or something of that, you know, so that we could preserve it.
Thank you.
And, uh, um, so anyway, that's.
Thank you. It is on the National Historical Register, and we, and we're aware of that, it can't be demolished, cannot be demolished, I mean, it just can't be.
Right.
Okay, um, any other discussion on this? Remind us, um, this is a yes vote, approves spending the money, a no vote, does not. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yes.
Motion fails. Counselor Disorder.
Order number FY-twenty-three dash one-two-one. Order number FY23-121, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weeda Gardner, in order to install a roof over the back stairs at the police station, move that it be ordered the sum of $30,000 be appropriated to install a roof over the back stairwell at the police station, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $30,000 from free cash. The majority vote required.
Ricketts, second, opposite way.
We're good.
Capital Committee was two yes and one no, and Ways and Means was a negative, mixed negative, three nos and two yeses. And Capital Committee, the question was whether or not a roof over the stairs was going to keep it from getting wet and, or, you know, having more ice. But from us, it was, not that the project didn't need to be done, but that we, not to take it out of free cash.
Any other discussion on this, Counselor Lapienski?
What was the reason for the split vote in Capital?
The reason for the split, I think...
The Capital Improvement.
Oh, Capital Improvements? Well, they can speak for themselves.
What was the reason?
Because the snow, like this, it keeps the snow off the stairs. And I said a roof is not going to keep the snow from blowing on these stairs.
Right.
Because they'll be open when you drive.
Okay.
So, before I, since, so that I don't have to get recognized again, my position on this is this is something that should be done, but it should be done with the money we already appropriated last year since it hasn't been spent yet. And once they spend that money, I would give them more for this.
This is also a majority vote, and that's because of dollar amount, is that correct? Funding source, okay. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Counselor Golub?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Lapienski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Abstain.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion is defeated by majority.
Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-122, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weeda Gardner, in order for the Rocky Mountain Highland Ridge Trail Wayfinding Map Development, move that it be ordered that the sum of $185,000 be appropriated for the Rocky Mountain Highland Ridge Trailway Finding Map Development, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $185,000 from Fund 8402 to capital stabilization. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
This had a mixed positive from Capital Improvements, two yes and one abstention. And from us, it was a mixed positive for yes and one abstention. May I?
Yes.
This will be one of my times speaking. I'm going to be voting no on this now, however, in light of, in light of the fact that we are having trouble operating, funding our operating budget, I think this is a great idea. I actually thought it was a little expensive, as did the community preservation. But I think it's a very good project, but when we can't fund our operating budget, we have to find ways that, to not be spending. So, I am a no on this because perhaps we'll have so much money left in capital stabilization that we'll have to fund things appropriately.
Any other discussion on this? Counselor Golub?
In the committee, I was a yes on this. I really want this project to happen. It hurts my heart to have to vote no on this. I went hiking there with my son two days ago to check out the trails. And there's, my understanding is there could be two pieces to this project. One is the current trails that we have, adding a, bringing a can of paint and some signs to make the current trails more navigable, navigable, if that's a word. The second part of that could be charting new trails. And that might have legal costs, might have the professional costs of someone who does that charting. And then there could also be the digital piece of like alltrails.com or something like that. I would love all of that to happen, but currently, I am a no. I might vote for like $5,000 for some paint and some signs. And I would love to see this come back at some future date, but currently, if we can't pay for kids to be able to read maps, we can't, I can't vote for this. And I would love to see this money come back for the operating budget.
Counselor Lapienski, then Counselor Bullock. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, this is one I really do want to support. I use this park all the time. In the winter, I skate there with my kids, and I walk there in the spring and summer with my dogs. I'm wondering if we can amend this down to more like $50,000. And that's like a chunk of, there is trail maintenance that really needs to be done and signage that really needs to be done.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to amend this down to $50,000.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Lapienski?
May I wrap into it what I was going to say about the original motion so that I don't have to speak again?
You're talking on the amendment? The amendment, you're talking on the amendment?
So, what I was asking is, is it okay if I say what I was going to say about the whole thing and also the amendment so I don't have to speak again? You'd rather me do it?
Yeah, that's fine, but lead with the amendment so we know where we are because we're supposed to be talking about the amendment.
I basically see where people's heads are at, and I think it makes sense to reduce the amount. Here's why I would have voted in favor, whatever the amount was. I sat through the Ways and Means when this was discussed, and when I went home, my notes from that said WTF because I could not understand how, wayfinding map basically means signs, how signs could cost as much as a house. And I met with the Recreation Director about this, and she explained that, so yes, it's signs. Yes, it's also potentially the creation of new trails. But the biggest piece of the money was actually that we have substantial portions of the trails in this park that are on land that the city doesn't own, and that's not by design. Like the Robert Frost Trail, I'm from Amherst, goes through a lot of private property, and the, whatever committee that maintains it has like formal legal agreements with them, and we don't have that because we only just kind of found out that some of those trails are on other people's land. So, a lot of the money goes to surveying and legal expenses to try to fix that before the new trails would be created. And I actually think that the number is probably still too high, but because of the nature of these types of expenses... Excuse me, wow. It is late and my throat's closing up and telling me to shut up. It's because of the nature of these expenses, it's the sort of thing where you have to have enough, but basically, she said that if there was some money left over, then it would be turned back, and she wasn't going to put it towards another project. And so, that's why I wasn't so concerned about that. Is it a pressing need? No. Do I use these trails at least five days a week? Yes. And I think it's a huge asset, and I also think that one of the greatest things we can do for our kids is let them do things outside and not only be in school because the outdoors is one of the greatest educations they can get. And so, that's why I'm supporting the amendment in the hopes that it'll be more likely to pass, but I would have supported the whole thing. And now, I won't talk again.
Thank you. I just want to talk for a second on this. You might have just saved my vote on this, and I'll tell you why. Because if we're going to assess everything by wants and needs, I would have said this is a want. There's no, you know, we don't need to do this, but it's a want. But, if we have a liability situation where we have trails that are being used by the municipality on private property, and it holds the municipality responsible, and we have to reroute those so they become legal on our own property, then that's worth $50,000. But I'm just saying, but that's a need because now we're off our own land. And if that's really the reason, then I'll vote yes for the $50,000 because I was going to vote no for the whole thing.
Yeah, I think that that's actually a concern that I have as a liability piece, especially because a lot of the trails in our city are not town-maintained. Like, I just had an experience a couple of weeks ago where I emailed Marlowe and was like, who maintains this trail? Because it had been blocked by a tree. It's a trail I walk my dog on every, almost every day. And he was like, not, like, basically, there's people who maintain those trails. It's, some of it's city land, the town rec department does some of it. And so, like, I just went out there with my chainsaw and cleared the trail because I was like, when is this ever going to happen? But the same thing happens, it's Highland Park, too. When those trees go down at Highland Park, like, we get the town that comes in and clears the like imminent risk things, but the regular maintenance is a liability if it's not happening. So, I think that something needs to be done because Highland is utilized by a lot of people. There's never a day that I walk there and I don't see people.
I know too much about this because I've walked that park when I had a dog every day, twice a day. There is money being spent from community preservation for improving the trails. So, that's a separate issue. I think the issue of private property is something that the Mayor created when she sold the land at the end of the Highland Park Trail that the bicyclists use. Until, before then, it was sort of, the owner said it was okay. Anyway, I don't, I heard the offer, the presentation for this, and it wasn't about legal, it was about signs. And this seems like an enormous amount of money for signs. I tried to get $8,000 to put an air raider in the pond, and that got nixed. So, I, you know, I think things can be done for a lot less. This seemed like a Taj Mahal project. Anyway, but I'd vote for 50.
Anyone else? We're on the amendment for $50,000. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? The amendment passes? Now, we, is there any discussion on the full amended motion? Counselor Lapienski?
I said I wouldn't talk again. I lied. I have one very simple comment.
He doesn't have a second check mark.
My comment is only that in addition to Rocky Mountain and Highland Ridge, there's another name for this land, which is Pecum Tuck Ridge, and that's the original name.
Seriously?
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Roll call vote on the amended $50,000 full motion? It appropriates $50,000.
Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts? Counselor Toronzo?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, no.
The motion passes by nine.
Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-123, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weeda Gardner, in order for the Beacon Park bocce courts. Move that it be ordered that the sum of $80,000 be appropriated for installation of Beacon Park bocce courts, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $80,000 from free cash. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Okay, thanks. Capital Improvement Committee was majority, it was one yes and two no. And Ways and Means was a unanimous negative because CPA voted the week before, and they're going to take care of that.
So, this will be paid for by CPA?
As long as we approve that at our next meeting. Yes, $4,500 is coming from Disability Access, and the remainder is coming from CPA, so there would be no money, no reason for us to vote for that.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any other discussion on this? So, a yes vote would authorize the $80,000, a no vote would not, and it would be handled by the CPA. With another vote, if it's approved. If the CPA portion's approved. It is getting late now, and I'm... Yes. When it comes to us and we approve the CPA, then it'll be paid for by CPA. If we say yes tonight, it'll be paid for in this funding method. If we say no, got it. All those in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we weren't...
So, it was, it was all those in favor, we had one in favor, all those opposed? No. Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion fails. Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-124, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weeda Gardner, in order for GPS energy recovery units. Move that it be ordered that the sum of $195,000 be appropriated for Greenfield Public Schools. For the energy recovery units to be, to meet said appropriation, transfer $195,000 from Fund 8402. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Small correction, it's, and $68.
Thank you, Phil. Counselor Elmer, you're absolutely right.
Thank you. Counselor Disorder?
Okay, so, this was a unanimous positive from the Capital Improvement Committee and a unanimous positive from Ways and Means. This was accompanied by a grant. The school department applied for a grant to cover the most of this cost, I think around $300,000, $294, $294,000. And the, this is for air exchange, they're old, and they could go at any time. So, they had the grant, and we were supplying part of it.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-125, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Weeda Gardner, in order for sewer inflow and infiltration repairs and replacement. Move that it be ordered that the sum of $300,000 be appropriated for sewer INI repairs and replacement identified in the Wright Pierce Sewer System Evaluation SSAS, and to meet said appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Mayor is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of $300,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, or any other enabling statute, and the Mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project, and to be used to reduce the within appropriation. And further, the Mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purposes, and purpose for these projects. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
This received a unanimous positive from Capital Improvements, and Ways and Means was a unanimous positive. This is, we've been under... This is, we've been under a consent order with DEP and we're doing much better, but we have to keep our water clean.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes. Counselor Disorder?
Order number FY23-126. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, in order to replace dump truck number 37, move that it be ordered that the sum of $230,000 be appropriated to replace truck number 37. And to meet said appropriation, $237,000 be appropriated from fiscal year 23 sewer retained earnings. Majority vote required.
Was that $230,000?
$230,000.
Okay.
Second Mayo?
Thank you. That was a Capital Improvement Committee forward a unanimous positive and Ways and Means was unanimous positive as well. This definitely, I can't describe car parts, truck parts. This needed replacing.
Any discussion on this? Counselor Lapienski?
So I'm just going to ask what may be a stupid question, but this says truck number 37. We don't have 37 dump trucks. Why is it called that?
No, just yell from back there, Marlo.
The public should know why it's called this. People should know that because the public's up right there. They watch it later.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thanks, Marlo. Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes.
Order number FY23-127. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, in order for water main replacement, move that it be ordered that the sum of $400,000 be appropriated for water main replacement and to meet said appropriation, $400,000 be transferred from fiscal year 23 water retained earnings. Majority vote required.
Second?
This was a unanimous positive from Capital Improvement and a unanimous positive from Ways and Means.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes.
Lastly, order number FY23-128.
Kind of lastly.
Oh, yeah. The City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Rita Gardner, in order for Millbrook Well Number 2 rehabilitation, move that it be ordered the sum of $45,000 be appropriated for Millbrook Well Number 2 rehabilitation and to meet said appropriation, $45,000 be transferred from fiscal year 23 water retained earnings. Majority vote required.
Second?
This is a unanimous positive from Capital Improvement and also unanimous positive from Ways and Means.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes. Presentation of any petitions? None. Reports of committees? Waived? Unfinished business?
I have a question. I don't know when I would move to make this, but I just did the calculations on the money that we have saved and could, the mayor asked us for a recommendation about allocating money to the schools and I don't know if that would come under unfinished old or new business?
Probably. It's probably new.
Okay.
But after the first readings, we'll take a look at that. And then I think Director, our finance director has a, Schindler has a follow-up on the Munis disappearance reference earlier. Readings?
City Council First Reading, April 19th, 2023. Appropriate 750 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Greenfield High School Track 88 access. Appropriate 75,500 from CPA undesignated fund to fund the Beacon Park Improvements Project. Appropriate $22,226.31 from CPA undesignated fund to fund citywide outdoor site amenities. Appropriate $47,523.69 from CPA reserved for community housing and $52,476.31 from CPA undesignated. $100,000 total to be provided to the CSO Wells Street Shelter Expansion Project. Appropriate $31,023.69 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the FCAS Barn Rehabilitation. Appropriate $15,000 from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Highland Park Trail Restoration Project. Appropriate $15,500 from CPA reserved for historic resources for the Historical Society Documentation, Document Preservation Project. Appropriate $1,000 from CPA reserved for historic resources to the Museum of Our Industrial Heritage. M-O-I-H. Appropriate $7,773 from CPA reserved for open space and $42,226.31 from CPA undesignated. $50,000 total for the Greenfield Pickleball Court Expansion Project. Appropriate $24,000 for CPA, from CPA reserved for open space to fund the Shattuck Park Fitness Center, Fitness Cluster. Fiscal year 24 operating budget, six orders. for the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 by transfer from Fund 8406 OPEB stabilization to reduce the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget from $61 million, that's not right, $61,327,584 to $60,327,584. That is the wrong number. That subtracted $1 million as opposed to $100,000. So, so it should, well, it would need to be...
So that would be?
$61 million...
Two-hundred?
$227.584.
It's reducing it.
Right, but they subtract...
But it's only reducing it by $100,000, not a million.
It's a transfer of $100,000 and the actual math is subtracted $1 million as opposed to $100,000.
It subtracts $100,000, not a million.
Shouldn't that $61,327 be $61,627?
No, because the first ones, we were taking $50,000.
Right. So the first, the first line on there said $61,627,584. The next line, it's saying that the operating budget is $61,327,584. It's off by 300 grand.
Yes.
I see that the million part is off, too.
Yeah, well, it's off a million, but as I recall, I'm just trying to think. I remember that $50,000 was coming from free cash. But at any rate, the subtraction on the second fiscal reading, I don't know how you want me to correct that.
No, there's a couple of, I think we have two issues at the moment. I think the top line says $61,627,000 and now you're reading $61,327,000. Yeah. We're going to pause this for a second while we figure out this for a moment. I'm sorry. We just have to figure this out. Counselor Disorder, could you reread the CPA reserve for open space? The $7,773.69 line? Could you just reread that one, please?
Appropriate $7,773.69 from CPA reserved for open space and $42,226.31 from CPA undesignated. $50,000 total for the Greenfield Pickleball Court Expansion Project.
Thank you. We had just missed a sense on that and I just wanted it in the record. And they're talking about this. Counselor Golub, you mentioned that you were suggesting that someone make some recommendations to the mayor on the money that we saved. So you're asking us for, to come up with a calculation of the money that we did not appropriate and send that as a recommendation?
I am.
Okay. We can do that through Ways and Means and we'll take care of that. And that will go forward. And also would be the, those recommendations that were made for transfer of funding to free up more money can be made at similar time?
Question. Several months ago, I remember that Counselor Lapienski moved to recommend that the mayor allocate funds from contract stabilization to contract stabilization. I don't usually speak after midnight. Can we not do that? Can we not, can we not state that recommendation today? We've just saved $795,000. Okay. We haven't, all right.
Let's, let's get, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. So let's put them, let's go to Ways and Means, get the figures, and then we'll make recommendations based on Ways and Means recommendation of the dollars. Is this introducing anything that hasn't been introduced? Okay, go ahead. We still, they're still working over here on that number.
So we can make any recommendation we want, but and I kind of feel like there might be a way around this, but it seems like the, sort of our normal process is if we want to be able to then turn that money around and have a financial order come back to us next month, we would have to have a special meeting. And so you'd have to make a motion to have a special meeting in the meantime, which could be concurrent with Ways and Means potentially in order for it to actually come back at the same time. Otherwise, we can't vote on the money again. We can say, "Mayor, do this," but then if she does it, we don't get it till July or August and then the money doesn't get spent.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with waiting till Ways and Means to bring this up.
And we, we haven't also started the school process at Ways and Means yet, so that we have an opportunity to introduce ideas, which was, the door was open for us this evening by the mayor personally. We have to do nothing with this notice of zoning amendment proposal, right? That's just a notice. Do we have to read that? Okay. I think it's just a notice. I don't think. Okay. I'm just checking off our boxes here, so when it's over, it's over. It was coming up. It's there. People can see it. And thank you, Counselor Gilmore. Are there any motions for reconsideration pending? I don't see any, but okay. Now we're just waiting for this. So when we can finish, we can finish. I think I'm re, this meeting is now in order on April 20th from the John Zahn Community Center. Yes, nomination papers are available for council and other city offices on Monday. So anyone that's still up with us? I have no idea why, but if you are... Yes, they can launch it later. In all honesty and trying to get away from humor for a moment at midnight, nomination papers are available in the clerk's office on Monday for the council positions and any other municipality for the next election. So they're available in the clerk's office. So 9:00 AM. If you're going in 9:00 PM, we have now a problem. So it's 9:00 AM, if anyone would like, and there, there's many available offices. Are we now going back to Counselor Disorder?
We are.
Counselor Disorder?
Onward. for the fiscal year, fiscal year 2024 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 by transfer from Fund 8406 OPEB stabilization to reduce the fiscal year 2024 general fund operating budget raise I'll tell you later. for the fiscal year Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $3,404,557 for the fiscal year 24 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,431,535,000 for the fiscal year GSET Enterprise Fund. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $695,967.
Thank you. Did it have to be read? I thought we, it's a notice. We noticed. We made reference while you were talking, but we didn't read it. Director Schindler, you mentioned in the break, are you with me? There was a question about a number that was not on the Munis report and I asked you if I could get an update on that and you were going to check for me during the break and I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's in the same meeting. I think it would be good to...
I did look on the report. I'm not sure what, so I printed a new report and put it on the, in the shared file, but it's still in Munis. It's, the number's still in there, the 55. I'm not sure why it didn't show up on that, the report I sent to Tammy last week. But I did update and put it in the shared file, so it still is in there.
I appreciate that. And Counselor Disorder, if... Could you turn that mic on? We can hear you.
None of the debt was in there either, so that will be in the next Munis?
That should be all corrected. I did the full general fund this time. I might have, I must have pressed different parameters for the last report.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. I just want to make sure that was addressed and that you have accurate numbers, both of you. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Any opposed? Yes, she did. Any abstentions? We adjourn this meeting at 12:13 on April 20th.